Mr. Michael Johnson, I give the invocation, Pledge of Allegiance.
As we gather here tonight, we ask for your blessings and guidance. We pray for our troops and all those in harm's way. We pray for peace. We pray that you give your guiding hand on our deliberations and assist us in making decisions that affect our community and state. We pray that we achieve success by working together and being mindful of our goals. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is oath of office. When I call your name, if you'd come forward to Michael Kendry here, David Beatty and Barbara Omar. Oh, Omar, sorry, mispronounced that.
On behalf of York County, thank you for your service. It's an honor and privilege to administer the oath. If you need to raise your right hand, I will be there for me. At least I'm resqueled, that I'm fully qualified, according to the Constitution of this state, to exercise the duties of the office, to which I have been appointed, and that I will, to the best of my ability discharge the duties thereof, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of this state, of the United States.
Thanks, David. Appreciate it.
Thank you, David.
Thank you for your service. Thank you for serving.
First, we want to recognize two long-serving York County employees, Broadus Strain and Neil Kaiser.
And y'all were told to prepare like a five-minute speech, correct?
I'd have to get the sheriff to...
Five minutes wouldn't be enough, Broadus.
Broadus, sir, from 91 to 2016, so great service. We really appreciate it. Want to give you that award? If you want to say two minutes or one minute.
It was a pleasure to work for Bruce Bryant, my sheriff, and help the citizens of York County and family of sheriff's office as far as officers and their family also. And thank y'all so much.
Neil Kaiser, sir, from February 2002 to April 2016.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Neil.
Thank you.
Honored to give you that award.
Thank you, sir. Well...
I was just judging when I said y'all have to speak.
Well, I brought a little novel that I...
All right.
Mr. Kendry told me that I could take a minute to thank everybody, and he promised me, he said, "Neil, they're not going to interrupt you." So, but if I could ask your forbearance for just a moment...
Yes, sir.
...to take a minute to express my appreciation to all that York County has given to me these many years. It's hard to put it into words what I've been given. I've had the privilege of working with some exceptional professionals and some wonderful people, and I will always cherish the lifelong friendships that I've made with people who I would like to call the York County family, many of whom are sitting right here in front of you. Together, we've been through the best of times and the worst of times, but somehow we always managed to make it through. And I will say unequivocally that my friends in the tax collection and the finance departments, they're the best. And we've laughed together, and we've fought together, we've cried together, but it was because that we felt that we were family that we somehow managed to get it done together. If I could just take a minute to say one more thing, there's another part of the York County family that I would like to mention briefly if I could. I know that you all have some very important things to get to with some important issues in front of you, but if you don't mind, I would like to mention a little bit of unfinished business that I am somehow the one who's been given the privilege to finish. You see, I felt very close to York County ever since my old York High School days, and the unfinished business I'm talking about involves my father, Mr. T.D. Kaiser. I think the sheriff's over there shaking his head, he remembers Mr. T.D. At that time, my father also worked for York County, and he was a mechanic in the equipment's maintenance shop, and he was active in the community. He was a scout master, he was the York Fire Department volunteer, and most notably with the York Rescue Squad. Had his life not been cut short at the age of 52, he would have retired from York County at that time and expressed to its governing body how much he appreciated all that York County had given him. But he didn't get the chance to do that, and the reason he didn't was because of a disease called ALS, amyotropic lateral sclerosis, which is more commonly known as Lou Gehrig's disease. I would like to tell you why it's important for me to tell you about this right now. You see, during the time of my father's illness, the employees of York County, literally, and I do mean literally, became part of our family. They encouraged him and they helped him to continue to work and to make a meaningful contribution to their efforts, even though that disease took away his ability to use his hands, his arms, and his legs. Now, this was before the council manager form of government, of course, and times were very different then, we understand that. But let me tell you just a few of the things that the county supervisor, Mr. Ed Allen, and some of the other men who worked at the shop, especially Mr. Tom Atkins and Mr. William Hastings, tell you some of the things that they did for him, not just once, but they did it every day. While I was still able to rassle Daddy up into our truck and take him to work every morning, those men were there every day to take him out of the truck and put him in his wheelchair. And I remember many times when those guys were up on top of and inside of a Caterpillar diesel engine, and he would be sitting on the floor in his wheelchair telling them what to look for, how to take that engine apart, and then he'd tell them how to put it back together again. That the disease did not affect his mind, and all this, he knew by heart. Not only that, when the disease progressed to the point that he could no longer, well, that I could no longer handle him by myself, those men would come to our house on each Liberty Street every morning, pick him up in their arms, and put him in the truck and bring him to work. And they would feed him his lunch, and they would do whatever else was necessary to allow him to continue to be a part of their York County family. And they were always there, they never faltered. And so by their example, they taught both my brother and me that love, duty, and compassion can in some way, some strange way, turn the worst of times into the best of times. So it was their loyalty and their generosity that helped my father to maintain his sense of purpose and self-respect and his dignity. The disease finally took his life, but it was never able to take those things away from him, and that was due in great measure to the York County family. So if you want to see the same kind of people who were our family during the days of my father's illness, I'd like you to simply ask, I'd like to just simply ask you to look around at the York County employees of today. They're still my family, and they always will be, and I hope that you recognize and appreciate the exemplary work that they do for the people that they serve and the people that you serve. So in closing, and on behalf of my father and on behalf of my family, it really is my privilege and my honor to express to you our sincere and heartfelt thanks for your faith and your trust in us through the years, both past and present. We are and always will be forever grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Neil. Well said. Now we have... Sir?
Mr. Chairman, I was going to check and see if I could, on the new business part of the agenda, if I could take number four and five and invert the two, being that the first, if number five would be first, that I could, it could have quite a bearing on what's said or done.
Okay, so make five number four and four number five.
Please, sir.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those okay with that? Say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Okay, appearances are next. First person to sign up to speak, Gary Buchanan. Mr. Buchanan. Anybody in the hallway?
Is there maybe some in the overflow room?
Gary Buchanan. I just don't know if they're walking this way or walking away. Oh, here he comes. Yes, sir, Mr. Buchanan. If you would, name and address.
Gary Buchanan, 5160 Hampton Ridge Road. No, that's in Mr. Blackwell's district.
Newport.
First of all, I want to thank you for the opportunity to let me say something. It's in regards to the 1601 rezoning. The last time that we had spoke here, one of the council members, I don't know which one, said, "Let's go ahead and rezone it and then find out what's in it." Of course, we did that for the, for our healthcare problem, too, but anyway, we did the same thing with that. We do need to know what it is. I want to tell you also that although it's already probably decided, the homes, it's been labeled as units, of course, which takes the personal quality out of it, I think. Mr. Hargrove will be the builder, and he's also in the real estate, he's also on the planning committee. It's kind of like a circle, it's almost a complete circle. But I want to tell you that as my family and I, I got saved by the blood of Jesus Christ a long time ago, and he's been so good to me to give me a family. I think it's my right to just, I guess, wish and hope and pray that they wouldn't be able right up on, right up behind me. I don't think anything will ever stop it. Everybody has their own feeling about it, and money seems to rule rooftops, tax base, whatever, seems to rule. With the housing development that's already started in the other, I'm not exactly sure what the name of that place is, it's down where the old golf course was, has got, whether you may or may not, someone has told me that there's two, already two offender, registered offenders, lives there. And my family is very important to me. The protection of my family is very important to me. It is a difficult time to think about, you may have a constant flow with three homes on one acre, is pretty tight, and I see why they're called units. I just, I would like, if they were going to start it, start it on the other side of the right-of-way, just a little bit away from me, the right-of-way to the high-tension lines. Knowing that, realizing that I can't change anything, we do trust the Lord for everything. And I don't, I don't see prosperity as monetary gain, I don't think personally, that's the way I feel. I realize we've got a business going on, you know, roads and improvement and gaining in money and all, and I'm thankful to have lived my whole life in York County. And it is the finest place to live. If I did have to move, I definitely would want to stay in York County, but I never planned to move when I bought the house 20 years ago, over 20 years ago. I did go around before I actually bought the house, I met all of my neighbors. And whether it be politically incorrect or not, you know, of course, real estate people don't, don't have anything, any voice on that because of political correctness. But I think the reality is, if you're going to make Rock Hill a place friendly for families, I really think you, I think families need someone more vigilant, and here I am vigilant, talking about vigilant, actually, I can't see too much, very, very little, but we pray, and we're just hoping that it won't get out of hand. Nine times out of 10, I did do my homework, and I contacted the city of Rock Hill. When I did, of course, they're supplying the water to that area, it's sold by the, sold to the county, and the county simply marks it up, and, but it is the city. And I know just the stroke of the pen that it could be an invasive act to consume us into the city. Now, we've went down that road before, but if they're already, already giving the utilities to the county to be sold to us, then, I mean, it's right around the corner. We never received what was, what was promised to us on some kind of a document that would say we would not be consumed into the city. But I want to tell you that I am not, I'm not here to complain, although it sounds like it. I want to tell you that I appreciate everything that you do, and it's not held, it's not taken lightly on my end. And I've never had anything to say to the council, really, but I just wish you'd consider our families and the kids that's growing up there, and success is not measured by dollars and cents. So basically, that's all I have, just wanted to tell you that.
Thank you, Gary.
And I would like to have that document saying...
Actually, David Harmon wrote up one where it says the county supply the water and sewer, is that the one you're talking about?
Oh, the one that says that we can't be consumed into the city. Now, we had spoken at the fire station, actually, at two different, two different times.
Yeah, I forgot the argument that came up, but I think it was, David, do you remember the...
Yes, you asked me to prepare a letter as to who we serve, which I wanted to show.
I guess it was kind of cause and effect, everybody was thinking that the city would supply, and then you'd have to be, agree to come in, but the, you know, there's, the county supplies, and it's still just state law based on whether the city can annex an area or not. I think it's like 70% have to agree to it, so...
So you would have your 70% if you stacked in those 55, actually, it went up from 55 to 55 to 60 homes.
Well, I don't know about that. Most people don't want to deal with, you know, feel like you do in that regard.
Yeah, that, there was a petition that went around that was unanimously, everybody signed it.
Right.
So, but I just wanted to bring that to you, and I have not seen a letter, nobody has given us anything in that regard.
Okay, thank you, Gary. Appreciate it. Next person is Eva Jenkins.
I live at 1802 Warrington Place. My husband and I own half of the property in Newport that's up for rezoning. I like to look at the positive side of things, and that being said, I'd like to point out some of the benefits the neighbors will see with the proposed development. The homes in the neighborhood that Bill Hargrove wants to develop will be priced between $2,000 and $300,000. That's going to bring fairly affluent families to the area, ones that plan to stay there for a while. The homes will have two-car garages, excuse me, wide drives for parking. The roads are going to be 22 feet wide with curbs, guttering, sidewalks, and on-street parking will be restricted by the neighborhood covenants. County-maintained roads, which will provide new access to the parish and mobley homes, will provide ample space for large vehicles such as fire trucks and long trucks with horse trailers to pass through. 50-foot buffers are required between existing homes and the new development. The retention pond, in addition to these buffers, will provide privacy and separate the development from adjacent properties. County water and sewer will be run to the new development. A petition against this development was signed by a number of residents because they were led to believe they would be annexed by the city. This was misinformation. Documentation that county water and sewer will be run to the new development has been provided. Adjacent properties will have the option to tie into the county lines, whether or not they choose to access services at this time. This would prove beneficial should their wells ever be contaminated by the wastewater from the dry cleaners nearby. Home values will increase. Residential development opposed to commercial will increase surrounding home values. This will benefit anyone wanting to sell their property or their heirs once they pass on. Taxes on their property will not go up while they still own it. The county's 20-year plan, which should go into effect within the next two years, calls for single-family, multifamily, and commercial in the community center designation placed on and around this property. The proposed neighborhood easily fits into the county's plan for the future and protects the area from the possibility of apartments as well as noisy commercial operations. From the beginning, we've tried our best to honestly answer questions and address concerns. I feel we've done all we can, and now hope that we can get the rezoning required to move forward with the sale of our property. This is a window of opportunity for the Jenkins and the Rines. If the rezoning request is not approved, we will lose the sale. Future offers could be a long time coming, and when they do, there's a chance something less desirable than a residential neighborhood with nice homes and nice county-maintained roads. In that sense, this is also a window of opportunity for our neighbors. In closing, I would ask that you consider voting tonight in favor of rezoning the Newport property to single-family residential. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Next person's John Ryan.
I, too, would like to thank you for allowing me to speak and to voice my support for the rezoning. I am John Ryan. My primary residence is in Clemens, North Carolina. I have a second residence in Newport at 320 Glendora Road, which is the land adjacent to my sister's property. My Newport home was inherited from my mother and father, who purchased the home and 25 acres in 1963. They lived there for over 50 years. My memories of them growing, and growing up revolve around those 25 acres. It was a difficult decision to decide to sell part of the property to Dream Builders, but I decided to do that. Upon rezoning, I planned to sell nine acres of the land to Dream Builders, but retain ownership of four acres plus the home site. So I have vested in interest in making sure that what is done is good for the community. Newport today is different than it was in 1963 or even 10 years ago. In 1963, about all that was there was three convenience stores and Joe Covington's auto garage. Today, we have Walmart, restaurants, well-planned businesses, and soon a credit union. But as a result of current zoning, area properties have deteriorated. Some of the homes along the area that we're talking about have been converted for rental use, while others have been converted to business and commercial uses, with some of those businesses actually having unscreened outdoor storage of equipment, building supplies, landscape materials, and even adjacent to my property, there is a junkyard with old carnival equipment and used cars. My interest in this is to protect the value of the area and the, and the land of the property owners. I believe that residential zoning and a development as proposed by Dream Builders has the best chance to retain or increase property values while maintaining a good residential quality of life. The nine acres of land that Dream Builders will purchase is a beautiful piece of land that has a one-acre pond in the rear. Developed, it will be a great place for families to make their homes and raise a family. I sincerely request that you approve this rezoning for single-family homes. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Next item's public forum. Now, understanding public forums, excuse me, you can only have two minutes to speak, and to be fair to everybody, I have to cut you off after two minutes, so that just to give the next person their right to speak. First person is CJ Ramsey.
Is this the same as the presidential debates, I can maybe squeeze a little bit more time in?
I'm afraid not. Nice try, though.
My name's CJ Ramsey. My primary residence is 349 Hidden Lakes in York. I'm here to address the council about a home in Travis Acres. As you well know, a while back, there was some question about some contamination to some of the home well systems there. Well, to this point, I have found out my daughter's well is contaminated with a chemical that potentially can affect your liver and your kidneys. And this contamination, as you well know, is coming from the county landfill because the landfill was not properly lined when constructed. The thing that concerns me is I have found out that some departments of York County knew of this potential contamination close to a year before the homeowners was even contacted. To me, that's very disgraceful. My son, my daughter, three grandchildren, three of my grandchildren live there, they had no idea of this, nor when I went to the meeting, when they got the homeowners together, no one could explain, is there any short-term or long-term effect to this contamination? And I guess the other thing that concerned me is since the county has found out about this contamination, no one has yet to contact my family about them being tested to see if this contamination is in their body. All I have been contacted about is in to put a filtration system, and I know part of this is to cover, excuse my language, the bippy of York County. That's not the solution. And my question, why wasn't my family consulted by the county about being tested, knowing me being a concerned homeowner, I have to disclose to them about this contamination. Well, none of them was interested, none whatsoever. So what am I expecting from the county? Was this.
I'll have to...
Okay, one second, please.
I'll give you ten more seconds.
I expect, I want the county to buy this home, to relocate my daughter until she can buy another home, because she had nothing to do with this, and the county needs to put a face with what York County is responsible for, because the fact of the matter is, if I contaminated one small part of York County's land, I would be sued, fined, threaten the lawsuits. So I'm just asking the county, please be responsible for what the county has done to my property values, which are basically gone now. That is all that I'm asking, and I do want to thank you for your time. And you know, the main thing is this, I do not want to see my family, my daughter, my grandkids' life cut short because of some unknown condition that may develop because of this chemical. Yes, you wanted to put a filter in, I stopped it for a week. I stopped it for a week because that's not the solution. I was told, "Well, Mr. Ramsey, the county don't want to buy your property." Well, I don't blame you. I would not want to buy it, because I don't want it neither, and I'm getting my family out of there. And I hope and pray that this is the only residence that has shown up positive with this chemical. Up to this point, as far as I know, this is the only residence. I'm getting my family out of there, and eventually, it's going to be at the county's expense. I'm trying to keep it out of litigation. I've turned away six attorney firms to call me about this. I want to do the right thing. I don't want something for nothing, and just please keep that in your consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Uh, next person is Jennifer Ramsey.
Hi, I'm Jennifer Ramsey. I live in Travis Acres with my daughter. We have been there about seven years now, um, and my concern is with the water, the contamination, um, that was, you know, from, from the landfill. And I am concerned because, as my dad had said, no one has contacted us about getting tested or even talking to us about the complications that could come in the future with, you know, with our health. Um, and we have recently got tested, but I was really discouraged that no one from the county has reached out to us to just check and make sure that we were not contaminated. Um, and you know, my con, main concern is my daughter. She is six years old and was raised there, and that's the only water, you know, she has really drank, um, was our well water, because we thought, you know, it's well water, it's better, it's, you know, it's clean. And, um, so my concern is my daughter and her health and what could potentially happen in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Uh, next person's Tammy Norris.
Hi.
Hey.
My name is Tammy Norris, and I live on Woodland Drive here in York. I'm the previous owner of the property CJ Ramsey spoke about. Um, we purchased the home in like two thousand and one, and I sold it to Mr. Ramsey in, I think it was two thousand and seven. My concern after hearing everything is I was not notified of anything going on with this water. I am the previous owner. I have grandkids that live there. I lived there. My husband lived there for like five to six years. I'm very concerned about our health, why the county has not notified us. Why has the county not offered to pay for testing for us? My husband passed away last, last year in May with liver cancer. How do I know? How do I know that this is not what contributed to his death? I'm not saying it is. I don't know. But it's a very serious situation, and I'm very concerned for my health, my grandchildren's health, their health, CJ's health, her daughter's health, and I think something should be done. And that, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next person is Nancy Hayes.
Hi, my name is Nancy Hayes. Um, I live at two ninety-six Glen Brandon Road in Lake Wiley. Um, I'm here about, um, I'm interested what's going to happen with the overlay district over there and all of the construction going on. And behind our property is where Mary Waypoint is, um, supposed to be going to go in, as far as I know, the preliminary plat approval's been approved. Um, we have neighbors that live back there, um, down next to the creek, and they've told us about seeing eagles down there, and we went and took a look, and there are a pair of bald eagles back there nesting. I have a picture of the nest as well, um, that it's right on the, the nest is right on the other side of the creek. But so we're just basically concerned with all the construction that's going on over there and all the wildlife and everything. You know, the Department of Natural Resources says, like, the deer and things like that can relocate, but if we just keep tearing up the land, they don't have anywhere else to go. So I'd just like to, for you guys to put that in consideration, you know, on these developments. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Uh, next person's Will Jordan.
Chairman, members of council, I'm Will Jordan, two-two-zero-seven Oak Creek Road in Rock Hill. I'm with the Tuttle Company. I represent founders of Federal Credit Union, the owner of the property that is up for rezoning, RD one to BD one. It's approximately four-point-four acres. It's case sixteen oh-four.
Oh, Will, I just, I don't want to interrupt you. I just realized it is part of a public hearing today.
Yes.
If you wanted to wait until the public hearing, because this, you got two minutes. Public hearing, you just say your piece.
Two minutes is all I need.
Okay.
You want to finish now?
Fair enough.
Okay. The property joins BD one, and there's, uh, commercial and BD one uses adjacent to it. It's near the intersection of Gold Hill Road. There's a demand for high-quality neighborhood, uh, commercial uses there, and we have a developer who's, uh, contracted for the property to develop neighborhood resi, uh, neighborhood commercial. And the seller, uh, to ensure quality development, also has some restrictive covenants they will place on the property when it's sold to further ensure the quality development. And respectfully request that you approve the rezoning from BD one to, from RD one to BD one.
Thank you, Will. You were correct.
Thank you.
You didn't even need two minutes. Uh, next person is Mary Williams.
Let me adjust this down a little bit. Hi, Mary Williams, three-one-three Squirrel Lane, Lake Wiley, South Carolina. Um, I am also the co-chair for the Lake Wiley Civic Association, the treasurer for the Oakton HOA subdivision, and a resident, a very happy resident of Lake Wiley. I wanted to, first of all, thank, uh, Mr. Blackwell, Mr. Henderson, and Mr. Williams for attending the, the water, um, meeting in Camp, Camp Thunderbird, uh, a week or so ago, so thank you very much for your interest and concern there. I also wanted to thank Audra and her small team, which came and, uh, visited with, and met with me, um, last week, and listened and, and educated me and, and listened to some of the safety concerns I have for Montgomery Road. And, um, I'm also here tonight to find out more about the change in direction from the moratorium in Lake Wiley to the, the, I'm calling it the resurrection of the overlay, because I believe we've gone down this road before and it wasn't passed. So, um, just want to find out more of what, where you got, what your thoughts are, what direction you're going to be giving the Planning and Zoning Commission on the overlay, and I'm hopeful for there's good, um, thought concerning safety, traffic, quality of life, and environment for Lake Wiley residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Next person is Wayne Herden. Wayne?
He's in the overboard.
Okay, we'll wait up. Give him a second.
I'm ready to have them. My husband and I have got these in the car. It's the latest edition of the Lake Wiley.
How long you think it's going to take you?
Very nice.
Good timing there. Little segue.
Here you go. And thank you.
Thank you. It's nice.
There you are.
Sorry about them slowing.
Oh, no problem. No problem. We need to have a bigger chamber so people don't have to be a block away.
Wayne Herden, twenty-seven ninety-two McConnell Highway, uh, Rock Hill, South Carolina. We get the opportunity to speak with you gentlemen again, uh, this time. I would really like to reiterate some of the things I told you last month there, there. The fact is that we've, I personally feel that this contract that was signed by the district and Mr. Helin on December is, is invalid, because we had not had an opportunity to, uh, see the final, uh, offer that they would make to us, um, and we had not signed off and released the option to purchase the property. And so far as I know, Mr. Helin has not purchased and paid for this property at this point. The other point that I'd like to reemphasize, that the purchase agreement that I have in hand here indicates the development of this property has been supported by the school district, and I personally think this would be of interest to everybody in the county, because the school district is funded by tax money that all of us, uh, contributed to that. Um, and I think all of us should be offended by this. That's really the points that I'd like to make for you, and I'd appreciate the consideration to talk with you again.
Thank you, Wayne.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, next item is public hearing. Uh, first is consider second reading and public hearing on case number fifteen thirty-seven to rezon from BD two to BD three at, uh, nineteen forty highway one sixty in the Fort Mill community. Anybody here want to speak, uh, against? Speak against? Anybody want to speak in favor?
Move to close.
Got a motion to close? We have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Do we have a new motion?
Move to a close. Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, consider second reading and public hearing, case number sixteen oh-one. Um, rezon approximately twenty-five acres from UD to RD two at three-twenty Glendora Drive and Hampton Ridge Road in the Rock Hill community. And this being my area, I'd ask for a motion to approve.
Move to approve.
And please give the conditions.
Approve with conditions.
Yeah, the, um, let me just note the conditions. Limit the use to single-family residential, uh, additional conditions, a minimum home size of two thousand square feet, all homes to be single-family detached, all homes to be stick-built, and a traffic impact analysis is required and to be approved. Discussion? Uh, let me just point out one thing. I mean, obviously, this is my, part of my district. Uh, there was a lot of, I passed around a petition that occurred before really the developer had met, has had a meeting with everybody. Uh, since that meeting, I've not had anybody contact me against, and I just want to point out that for the options that are available, uh, and the owner of the properties, of property made it clear to me, they planned to sell the property. So the present options they had were hotel, motel, a pet motel, bowling alleys, health clubs, paving and earth moving operations, construction company, assisted living centers, emergency shelters like a homeless center or shelter, manufacturing, of course, bank, office buildings, automotive garage shops. And with the, um, proposed land use map, it's going to be designated as a community center, mix of commercial and high-density residential. In fact, the proposal now, based on the probably approved comprehensive land use plan, future land use plan, is currently drafted. The planners would note that the developer's proposed density is too low for a community center. So that being said, with all the potential things that could go there, this is certainly the best option that the surrounding neighbors had or have. So with that being said, I support it. Uh, question on the motion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, and bear with me while I turn pages, sorry. Uh, next item, consider third reading, case number sixteen oh-two, to rezon from AGC to RUD one, highway three twenty-two in the Herden and Farm Road in the Rock Hill community.
I'd move to approve it with conditions.
And you want to note the condition?
Yeah, I'll, I'll read them out. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, since we last met, uh, we held a meeting between, uh, the Herden Heritage, uh, residents, along with their HOA president or, um, acting president, before he turns it over, I guess, and also the land broker, Mr. Tim Helin. Uh, we set for, we set out to, to try to work out a, a pretty good agreement with the, the neighbors as well as the land broker, who's not going to be developing the land, but he was willing to sit with us to put some, some restrictions onto the property before he puts them up for sale, uh, to custom builders. Uh, he's not going to be building the homes, but he was graceful enough to sit down with members of this community. Even though he didn't agree to putting the lots in the HOA, I think we come up with something that was parallel in what the, the true purpose of a HOA is for, is basically to protect the investment of its homeowners, to make sure that things don't go into a community that, that pulls the value down. This is a pretty good, pretty good, uh, community, home values range anywhere from probably two-seventy-five to three-twenty-five is up with this three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. But I think what we come up with for some of the conditions, and I'm not going to read them all, because we, we, we really sat down for about an hour and a half and come up with a, a whole laundry list of some good conditions, but some of the concerns that, that we addressed was the percentage of hard, hard surface across the front of the home, which is going to be eighty percent, uh, brick, stone, hardy plank. Um, we discussed some minimum setbacks, um, a minimum of seventy-five feet. Uh, the square footage minimum is parallel with what the HOA covenants, uh, have now for the existing homes, which is two thousand, uh, but the average in that neighborhood is probably about twenty-four, twenty-four hundred, um, square feet. So we, we right in the ballpark on that one. Um, even specified if a home is two-story, you know, we're looking, a minimum of twenty-two hundred square feet on a, no, that's a one-and-a-half story, twenty-two hundred. In a two-story, um, the minimum is twenty-three hundred. Uh, we discussed not having chain-link fence, not allowing above-ground pools. If you have a RV or something, it has to be parked behind the home. So I think we've done a really good job of coming up with, um, a good set of, um, if you can use the term covenants for these, but these are good conditions that I think mesh pretty good with the existing homes in that neighborhood. So I think we come up with a real good, some real good conditions. Um, we had several neighbors to come out, and they were all...
You realize you're still kind of doing the motion thing, right?
Yeah. Well, well, I was just going through the, um...
Okay, because we're going to come back for discussion.
Okay. Well, I'm getting mine out now.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Roddy will be finished.
Let the record reflect that I'll be finished. Um, no above, no above-ground swimming pools. Uh, we've been discussing, um, the, the entrance part. There's a sign at the front of the entrance that will be, um, a part of this agreement also.
So did we have a second? I kind of got lost on that one. Oh, okay. Discussion?
I've said mine.
Okay. You didn't point out the, uh, Slav foundations are not permitted, which is...
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't go through all of them, but with conditions you covered.
Actually, that's a big deal with them. I wouldn't want to, never mind.
There, yeah, there, just to clarify, there are three sets of conditions in the, in the minutes. The ones that, that you're talking about applying to them are the ones that, that start off with since the twenty-first, council...
So we right in the ballpark on that one. Even specified if a home is two-story, you know, we're looking, a minimum of 2,200 square feet on a, no, that's a one-and-a-half story, 2,200. In a two-story, the minimum is 2,300. We discussed not having chain-link fence, not allowing above-ground pools. If you have a RV or something, it has to be parked behind the home. So I think we did a really good job of coming up with a good set of, if you can use the term, covenants for these, but these are good conditions that I think mesh pretty good with the existing homes in that neighborhood. So I think we come up with a real good, some real good conditions. We had several neighbors to come out and they were all.
You realize you're still kind of doing the motion thing, right?
Yeah. Well, I was just going through the.
Because we're going to come back for discussion.
Okay. Well, I'm getting mine out now.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Roddy will be finished.
Let the record reflect that I'll be finished. No above, no above-ground swimming pools. We even discussed beating over the entrance part. There's a sign at the front of the entrance that will be a part of this agreement also.
So did we have a second? I kind of got lost on that one. Okay. Discussion.
I'll say mine.
Okay. You didn't point out the slab foundations are not permitted.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't go through all of them, but with conditions you covered.
Actually, that's a big deal with them. I wouldn't want to, never mind.
Yeah, just to clarify, there are three sets of conditions in the minutes. The ones that you're talking about applying to them are the ones that start off with since the 21st council meeting.
Right, the others were not mentioned.
One through 14.
And just for the record, the residential structure shall be stick-built, the minimum square footage you covered. Covered that one, minimum 50% of the front of, well, you did that one too, so I think you kind of.
Yeah, they incorporate.
Yeah, kind of rolled with the others.
And the last 14.
So any further discussion? Question on the motion? Yeah, I'm sorry, Mr. Johnson.
I, at last meeting, was concerned with the fact that the Rock Hill School District is involved in the financing of this. And I want to publicly say I continue to be bothered by the fact that a governmental entity is somehow financing this. However, that being said, I don't think it's the role of this council to determine what the Rock Hill School District does. That's Rock Hill School District and the voters in Rock Hill's business. But I'm going to support this. I believe these are, this is a good compromise. But I would like to go on the record as publicly saying that I am very concerned by any governmental entity which gets in the business of literally financing a residential-type development like this. That is concerning to me.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Mr. Roddy.
I do want to see if I can help clarify the school board's role in this process. The way I understood it from Mr. Helin is that once the land is approved to develop and build homes, that he's, he's a land broker, and once this goes through, the actual purchase is going to go through. If I understand that correctly, that's kind of pretty much how it was given to me. And like you said, we are not, that's out of our purview to say whether it's right or wrong for the school board to structure something with a potential buyer. We had that discussion at our meeting. I think we were pretty clear that, you know, if there's any dispute over the contract or any financing situation, that needs to be taken up with the school board and some type of attorney because I certainly didn't run to be on council to dispute what the school board does with its property and its finances. So we did kind of clear that up. And I feel for the situation that happened with Mr. Herndon. If what he says is true, wasn't given the final option to repurchase his property that he sold to the school board. But that's kind of not under the purview of what this council is here to decide. But I've encouraged him to seek counsel, to talk with an attorney if he feels this contract is invalid. You know, he's been before several times to make mention of that. So we did as best we could with what we had, and some things are just out of our reach.
Any other comments? Ms. Cox?
Since we're discussing this further, I share the concerns about financing a project because as I understand it, what has happened is the school district purchased the property with the understanding that they would put a school in the area where the homes were developed. They recently determined that they were no longer going to do that and looked to sell the property. In terms of selling the property, it seems that we are picking and choosing who we are going to create a development agreement with. And when I say we, I'm talking about the Rock Hill School District. And I expressed my concerns at the last council meeting, but I said that if the folks in that community, who owned the homes in the development where the school was supposed to be, came together and got a solution together that would protect their property interest and that would minimize the issue of the school not locating there, that I would support that if they agreed that. I'm going to vote for this because it's my understanding that the folks in that community have approved this, and this is a one-time issue. That was a concern, and this is the best way to try and protect that interest. Otherwise, it goes to, it could be developed in any other fashion. This is the only way to control that, and that is the only reason I'm doing this. As a matter of course, I think it is, I have tremendous heartburn about the purchase agreement in that it looks like you don't, there's no, there's no accountability for the sale and the school district gets paid as lots are sold. And that is a major, major problem that I do not want to see. I will not approve again in this limited circumstances. Why I'm doing that, to protect those property owners.
Any further discussion? Mr. Winkler?
Since everyone's spoken, I just want to say I seconded the motion. And the reason I seconded the motion is we're being asked to vote on the merits of the rezoning, not the merits of Rock Hill School District's contract. As everyone else said, that's between the citizens in Rock Hill and the school district board, and whether or not they like it or don't like it, they can vote them in or out. We're being asked to vote on the rezoning, and I think it's a good rezoning, it's a good development, and I support it, and that's why I seconded the motion.
Any other comments? Let me just be a fourth to point out, I was pretty concerned about the way it was handled, but that is not the domain of this council. And being that's the case, it's not my part to let my vote be swayed by that judgment. I do want to commend Councilman Roddy for all his efforts because if I'd move out there, I would be very impressed with the conditions out there now. I'd take them.
Bump a beat you.
He will? I don't know what that meant, but anyway. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, consider third reading and ordinance to amend Chapter 33 of the York County Code of Ordinances, Section 33.018, pay policy, to add new subsection 33.018D to provide for an elected official discretionary pay policy, to add new subsection 33.018E to provide for a policy for pay for hard to recruit in unique positions, and to provide for other minors related thereto. Need a motion?
To approve. Second.
Kevin, do you want to make any comments before we have any further discussion?
Only if anybody has any questions, Steve.
Okay, this is.
We scratched through it fairly.
Anybody got questions for Kevin since this kind of triggered this? Well.
I don't have any questions, I just got some comments.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Kevin.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Williams?
They, I guess since the beginning, that's been one of the things that I've, that I've struggled with, is that we're creating a different class of employee and understanding than maybe we already have. Maybe it's already there. But I guess I didn't realize that the amendment we added last time applied only to elected officials. And speaking with it, I was trying to figure out how we could get it to apply with all department heads. And basically found out that we already have a policy that can do that. I understand why it's probably going to pass. I just, I have, I struggle with it with being two classes of employees, so I'm not going to support it.
Any other comments? Mr. Roddy?
I'll just go back on the record like I did last time by saying if, if the checks, if the checks going out, going to have York County, and I think we should have the discretion as to the salaries. We should, we should be, we were elected to vote on these types of issues, and I don't think being just because it's an elected official, they should have the right to, to have this kind of latitude to increase salaries up to 20%. I just think that's, that responsibility should be with us. You know, if they want to raise the salaries, that should come back through us because we're, we're the ones that will ultimately, we should have the ultimate say. That's why we were elected to make these kind of decisions. It's nothing against the elected officials, but I just think that responsibility belongs up here with us and not, not in those hands.
And I'm going to speak.
Mr. Winkler?
We asked the consultant to come talk to us about options and what we could do and couldn't do with all this, and we were told that this is perfectly legal, correct, been done in other areas, whatever you want. If we can prove and document why it is a special circumstance for unique positions, hard to recruit, that type thing. And I think this has been hashed, rehashed, and hashed a couple more times than it is. And so, you know, I support it 100%.
Okay, any other comment? Mr. Henderson?
I just wanted to say that in some cases like this, and there are rare occasions where you are to try to make, get a right, a wrong from way back in the past. And, you know, so this, this is a good thing to do. And somewhere out there, I would hope that elected officials, including Kevin, maybe even other elected officials, can operate freer and roam a little freer because overall they get the bottom dollar at the approval of the accounts, at the council. So, you know, it's kind of a management situation, and I think that, you know, that they should be entrusted in that to where they can make a lot of these decisions without having to come to us for every little thing. And tonight, we're talking about some money, I understand that, but, but there's a lot of other things that they have to come to us. I feel like it's just totally frivolous that these folks can be at home with their families. And they work a lot of long hours as it is and probably don't get paid for it. So I would, I hope that maybe even in, some of this can be discussed further at a later time in this direction.
Any other comments? Here none. I, you know, Michael helped me here, and I know we've gone through this enough, but my memory pales me. This is pretty much something that in the case of Mr. Brackett, he could legally by state law go ahead and take care of his situation, could he not?
He could. We have, we do have a pay study and a pay plan that has been approved by council. This allows latitude within the designated pay grades.
So this is allowing, the county's offer to give him some latitude, but.
Yes.
This was not necessary for him to be able to do what he needs to do.
At least within the strictures. I understand your question.
Right.
But, but it at least provides some guidance.
So I, here again, I understand the other argument completely. It makes a lot of sense, but nothing's 100%. So I understand as a business owner how difficult it is to hire good people, and you've got to be competitive with other cities and counties. So because of that, I'm going to support this. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no.
No.
I think I heard two. Next item, council to consider second reading of ordinance entitled to amend an ordinance entitled to establish operating and capital budgets for the operation of the county government of York County for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2015, to reduce tax revenues levied for the general fund due to updated value of a mill, and to include offsetting reductions in fuel and workers' compensation expenditures, to provide for an appropriation of unassigned general fund balance, water and sewer fund balance, and solid waste collection fund balance for transfer to the other post-employment benefits trust established by the South Carolina Association of Counties, in order to fund the unfunded liability as reported in the audit for the year ending June 30, 2015, to provide additional grant revenues from the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources for purposes of constructing a boat ramp on the Broad River, to appropriate remaining Santee Cooper loan proceeds for purposes of repayment of Santee Cooper loan, to establish new fund for capital projects funded by 2016 bond proceeds and general fund transfer, and to provide for other fiscal minors relating to county government.
Move to approve. Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, county manager Bill Shanahan to provide the Pennies for Progress Audit Results.
Basically, this is just to give a quick overview of the Pennies program order that was conducted by Green, Fennig, and Horton in April. The goal of, the scope of this project was to review project files related to changes in the referendum budget to current budget and change orders and approval process. Projects were selected by the ad hoc citizen committee, and those projects were Pennies 1, Highway 5, Cherry Road; Pennies 2, Fort Mill Southern Bypass; Tiga K, Gold Hill Connector; White Street Realignment and Railroad Crossing; and Pennies 3, Sutton Road. Audit summary. With Highway 5, the audit summary was the cost estimates for the original referendum were inaccurate. Basically, they were too low. With Cherry Road, the original referendum budget was, and this is a quote, "a shot in the dark." The most significant mistake was understanding the number of lanes needed. The change orders related to cost of asphalt appeared reasonable, and they did find adequate detailed support for the change orders that were available. Pennies 2, Fort Mill Southern Bypass, the original budget amount again was inadequate. The Tiga K Connector. The county project files did not contain documentation or support as to why the county agreed to assume project management and to pay for the entire project. The original intent was for the county to only pay for a portion of the new road. All budget changes were adequately supported. White Street Railroad Crossing, again, the amount included in the referendum was inaccurate. The county should have provided accurate and complete information to the county council in 2009 when they requested approval for the budget, excuse me, requested approval for the budget for this project. Basically, what they're saying there is when that was done, the actual cost, they left out design cost, right-of-way cost, and relocation of utilities cost. Pennies 3, Sutton Springs Road. The original estimates used in the referendum budget were significantly better than any projects we reviewed for Pennies 1 and 2. The use of detailed estimates enabled the county to far better budget actual costs. The change orders appeared reasonable and well documented. Audit takeaways by the auditors. Pennies 1 and 2, inaccurate budgets. Change orders reasonably and adequately documented. And inaccurate budgets, that's, we're talking about the original cost that we were coming up with. Pennies 3, estimates were significantly improved. Change orders reasonable and well documented. Audit recommendations. Develop an electronic system to better keep up with the progress and status of projects. And we're looking to see if we can do something like this in-house, and if not, then we'll take it outside. Implement a policy procedure for file maintenance and retention that is consistent with the state retention schedules. We have boxes of files that we really don't need to have anymore. Assign projects to consultants one at a time rather than assigning all projects at once. Several reasons for that, you know, if you give six projects to one firm, and that's 10 years' worth of work, and that firm changes. People leave, they retire, and they get other jobs. And so the people five years into the project, running the project, these projects might not be the same ones that we originally gave them to. And then if you've given them a bunch of projects and they're not doing real well on the second, first one, do you really want them to do the other three or four projects that you've given them? And this is a slide that we put in. This is lessons learned by staff currently based on what we've been doing for the last year to evaluate this program and plus use and information provided by the audit. Number one, improve Pennies for cost estimating by using a risk management estimating model. Use the same estimate model for current projects to determine accuracy of current budgets. Coordinate with South Carolina DOT while projects, project estimates are being generated, considering hiring an in-house right-of-way manager to potentially save funds and expedite the right-of-way acquisition process, and to include administrative fees in the referendum budgets. So, and that is what we got from this audit.
Questions for Bill?
I do want to do a couple things since, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for this. This audit, it was a limited audit that was done, and I personally saw it for the first time Thursday. Just so that I can let folks know, the citizen ad hoc committee has, was provided this information. They're going to be following up with questions to the auditor this coming week. We are in the process on the Pennies Committee of reviewing this and coming up with. We are in the process on the Pennies Committee of reviewing this and coming up with proposed recommendations and final takeaways from the information that was provided. I encourage all of the council members, sometimes in other committees, what ends up happening is we don't get to see the information, and there certainly isn't a presentation by our county manager about, you know, summarizing it until the committee has made a formal reporter recommendation. And I think it's important that, and all of this information has been shared with you all, it's in your packet, I encourage you to read that limited audit. It is not that much to read. And it, it uncovers a lot of good information that is critically important for us to understand before we make changes and, and make recommendations to you. I, I would like to say a couple of things, and this was hashed out at our meeting earlier, which is why, you know, maybe, I hope we're not duplicating efforts, but I think it's important enough, given the message that was just provided, to run through a few things. Some of the things that the audit clearly exposed was that the preliminary cost estimates were wrong. Those cost estimates were primarily done by a consultant. They were not done by county administration or staff. What's interesting is that the problem with the cost estimates are not due to rising construction costs, which is what we've heard in, in the media. What we are finding is that excessive right-of-way and utility relocation costs account for 30 to 40% of the cost of some of this referendum, these, these jobs. The county has little to no control over right-of-way acquisition and the cost of that, and we can't control the, the utility relocation cost to some extent, although politics played a part in our change on the relocation part back in 2010. What we also found, that you will see, is that there are different bodies that assumed responsibility for management of these different projects, and that doesn't need to happen. What clearly we have now is we have goods, we have good handle on this project, we have staff who are very plugged in to what is going on, and they are catching the things that we need to catch, and they are doing the job that needs to be done. What I think you will see is things that also changed that increased the cost and put us over budget were that the scope of these projects that were approved were changed, and it was changed without voter approval. And those are questions that, the information will come out as this committee continues to meet. We will have recommendations that will come to this council. We have met exhaustively about this, and I would just encourage council and ask you to give us these next few weeks to finish up the report, to talk to the auditor, and to come back to you with information about, about these projects, and let's, let's come to a consensus on that. I would ask for your indulgence on that.
Thank you, Ms. Cox. I think I heard Mr. Johnson next.
I'm concerned, and I lost my notes somewhere, forgive me a second. When I, when I reviewed this, when I just reviewed this, it seems that a lot of this was original budget amount was inadequate, and then exactly what Ms. Cox just said, we had kind of a creep in scope of what we could have done or not, or should have done on a lot of these projects. And I'm certainly going to rely on your committee to tell us, you know, the people who are making these estimates, were they just not qualified to make these types of estimates? Or was this truly just a, a creep in the scope? Did we just, we were going to build a two-lane road, and all of a sudden we built a five-lane road, and we were shocked that it cost us $30 million more than, I mean, that's a major issue. I also want to say this, right-of-way acquisition and utility relocation is a major issue. We come in here almost monthly and increase a budget just based purely on utility movement. I had a conversation with someone in the utility industry the other day who said, in the years that they've been in York County, no one has ever asked them what it's going to cost upfront. No one's ever gone to utilities and said, hey, what are you going to charge us to move it? Or give us your best guess on what that's going to cost, based on your experience of doing this over the past 20 years? Go ahead.
Yes, sir. And, and when we brought up at the last meeting, you know, the, the, what our staff said, and I have to believe my staff, is basically, they bring those, at the beginning of the project, they bring it to the utility folks, and they get a guest estimate based on what's going to happen, and then once they've reached that stage...
The planning stage during pre-referendum?
Yeah, that's it, not pre-referendum.
No, that's what I'm talking about.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Pre-referendum, so we can, if, if you get, if I guess it's 100, and you guess it's 200, and you're in the business of relocating utilities, I ought to go with your guess. So, I, what I'm saying is, pre-referendum, who should be asking those questions? If you want a real number, go to the people who are actually the ones that do the work and charge you at the end of the day for that number.
Agreed.
I, I look for, I, I think this is a, a great exercise. The county should always review its own policies and make sure we're doing things the right way. I'll certainly give you as much time as you can. But I, I, we've got to look, we've got to get better at this estimating, and this utility thing has to be addressed prior to referendums.
And I apologize for misunderstanding what you were saying, but, but you were right, and the, the hard issues on that is, you know, this, some of this stuff happened 19 years ago, and, and, you know, those folks are gone, the, the consultant firms that did the business no longer exist. I'm not even sure if the people live around here anymore that did the actual work, and there's no paperwork. So, it's going to be very difficult to answer, why'd you do it, or why did it happen this way? You know, the, the thing about it that I can say is, when you look at staff recommendations, you can see that they have learned from the mistakes that have happened in the past, and I don't expect those type of mistakes to happen in the future. Is it going to be perfect? No, because, you know, you start digging someplace and you find the underground rock that you just didn't know was there, I mean, but it's going to be a lot better and a lot more efficient than it has been in the past.
And I will just, if I can just say this one thing, I think the summary that was provided was fine, but I'm, I'm talking to the people who are watching, the voters who are watching, and pay attention to county council. Get a copy of the study if you want to know what's going on, and we will follow up within the next few weeks, this committee, and we are going to make some, some, I think, strong recommendations, because the people in our county want accountability, they want their existing roads paved, and we need to make sure that what the folks voted on happens. And so, I, that is the goal of the committee, and get, it's only, how many pages? 20-page report? Not even that? Get the report and look at it if you want to get the information on it, and we will certainly follow up with, with recommendations as the committee finalizes the review of the documents.
Mr. Henderson?
Yes. You know, from, from my take on a lot of this, and this has been gathered as, as far as, I don't know, a couple of months now or more, and as Councilman Cox just said, or Council Lady Cox, excuse me, just made the statement that this was a very limited audit. So, in other words, and I use this term in committee and said, it's basically a spot check.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, there, there's a lot of things that can be found in between, if, if there's research there in between the spots that were checked. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Well, I, I guess what I'm looking for is the fact, and you, you touched on it just now again, about some services that were paid on, that there was no paper trails, and no information as to exactly what happened. At least, that, that was what was implied in, earlier today. But, but I would really, and again, I know that there are some mistakes anytime humans are involved, but, but, and it may all revert back to a lot of this utility movement and, and all the right-of-way and whatnot. I can see some things getting kind of lost in the cracks a little bit, but I hope we will actually dig and figure out exactly to the best of our ability, because, you know, I want this thing to turn out to be the best thing that we can, that, and have the biggest bang for the buck for our people. I don't want a situation where folks are, and again, there's a lot of reasons for all this, okay? I understand that. But, but I hope that, and my goal is to get this into a situation where the folks have total confidence in this program, to where we can have some set guidelines as to, from utility movements, utility line movements, and power line movements, whatever it may be, water lines, to where we can have a set policy and actually lower those costs, because I feel like that a lot of that has been, in my opinion, I feel like it's been fairly, quite a bit of overrun, and I believe that we should work on a percentage, whether it be, I don't know, 15, 20%, and I know you, you know, the saying is, you got to figure, do your high and work low, but, but, but I'm willing to, I'm, I'm willing to go for the big, big number of trying to lower that cost, because you're talking 30 to 40% here. And, you know, as far as having an average possibly of what you were talking about, Councilman just a minute ago, is as far as going back and looking at some histories of, of the projects that's already been done. Mike could give us a reasonable reflection of what the future will hold and what type of revenues to levy. So, overall, I'm, I've been impressed with, with the changes that seems to be coming about. We've got a ways to go, but I do believe we can get there and gather total confidence of the public again.
And...
Oh, go ahead, I'll make comment next.
Go ahead.
Yeah, and, and, you know, we're, we're talking about ways that we're getting better and, and things that we're doing, but, and, and I agree, things that have happened in the past probably shouldn't have happened, and, and they were mistakes. But just a reminder, when, when we started this in 1996, we were promised eight miles of roadway over the next 20 years by the South Carolina DOT, and because of Pennies 1, 2, and 3, upon completion, we're going to have over 147 miles of highway improvements, 37 miles of gravel roads paved, 31 bridges repaired or replaced, 122 major intersections, 13 miles of interstate. We're the best in the state on what we've done. We're just getting better. And, and, and I don't, I don't want you to think that we've not done a good job. I mean, they have done, the economic development and the issues that we have because of economic development and the quality of life we have in this county correlates directly, in my humble opinion, to what's happened in the Pennies. So, it's, I just throw that out there.
Mr. Roddy?
I'm, I'm glad you pointed it out, Bill, because I don't want, want people to get the, the wrong idea, like we're kicking pennies in the knees, because it has been a great program for us, and we've seen a tremendous benefit by our efforts here. The state has come in, federal government's come in, and enhanced what we're doing with the Pennies. But it's amazing how, how far the penny can go when everybody's chipping in and spending dollars here in York County, even tourism, when it brings people to the area. We getting those pennies from, from passerby's also. But just to kind of put some things in perspective, we just got this report tonight. As I was thumbing through and listening to how costs have escalated over the years, and we are getting better with the program. You know, initially, when you're pioneering, you kind of, you kind of cut the path or blazed the path for others to, to be better after you, and I think we're getting better after ourselves, because there were some, some shortcomings from the '97 projects. We just finished '72 a couple of years ago, and that was on the books in '97, and I'm sure that, that cause was tremendously escalated. But just to put some real dollars into what we've been discussing here, I looked, looked through it real quick, and in 1997, the Cherry Road, the southern part of Cherry Road was on the books to be completed for $900,000. It wasn't completed until 2012 at a cost of $4.8 million. So, that shows you how either the, we can't say that the budget was too low, because had it been completed in two, in 1997, we probably would have been closer to that million-dollar mark. But you add 15 years later, you adding three-plus, three-plus million dollars to the project. Costs have gone up, labor's gone up, materials have gone up. Look at the Fort Mill Southern Bypass, it was on the books in 2003 for $15 million. We completed it in 2009 for $47 million. You know, we're talking real dollars here, and I think part of what we've probably ran into along the way is the process that we have to go through dealing with the state to be able to do some of these roads. I think we've had discussions on this council about how can we speed the, the start time up to the finish time, and part of that is some of the state regulations that have to be met when you're doing some of these roads. I think that could help us shorten the timeframe, shorten the cost of some of these projects. Then one more I wanted to point out, Highway 5, which was on the books in '97. And some of these projects date back to the initial Pennies, which, like I said, we were pioneers of this, we were the first ones walking through, so we, we blazed a trail, and, and we're learning from our mistakes, but Highway 5 started up in 1997, it wasn't totally completed until 2010. '97, we had it on the books for $24 million. We ultimately completed this project for $57 million. So, part of what we're seeing is the lack of how long it takes to get projects started and completed, that, that's part of the cost inflation, and some of the regulations that having to deal with the state that slows some of these projects down, because we all know things go up, and we have to be able to get into the market, complete these projects, and get out, so that we can stay closer to some of our projections on some of these, on some of these projects. But we, we've done a tremendous job, we have more paved roads, better, safer roads because of Pennies. I don't want the public to get the wrong idea that, you know, Pennies is not good for us, or we're, we're wasting it, but we, we had some shortcomings early on, and I tremendously believe we've gotten better, and we've gotten some additional funding from the state and federal government because we have Pennies in place. So, I, I do want to make sure that we, we take credit when we do things right and, and address the things that we've done wrong, and I think now we're getting on that right track. We have some tremendous oversight of what Pennies is doing with the committees, the ad hoc, county managers are heavily involved in it, so I just don't want anybody to give up on, on the Pennies program, because we will be coming up on, on a new one fairly quickly. So, I want to make sure everybody keep the faith on the Pennies.
Anybody else want to make a comment? Obviously, Pennies is a great program, it's, can we imagine what York County would be like if we didn't have these roads? And certainly, all the council members are making great points, lessons learned from the past, we absolutely need to do. And I didn't hear any attacks per se, but recognition of things that need to be made better for a return on investment for the taxpayers. But we, we look forward to giving Ms. Cox's committee all the time it needs to do a thorough audit to the satisfaction of the committee and the council. So, you want to go with the SIB now?
Yes, sir.
Excuse me.
York County Application, try that again, York County Application to South Carolina Transportation Infrastructure Bank. Want to start off by requesting that, at the end of this, that hopefully you tell me to move forward with this. They have their next meeting on the 28th of April, and if we're not in there, then we're going to lose three to six months, and we're actually being contacted by state departments, asking us, not directing us, but asking us when this will be ready. So, just, just so you know, those things are happening. And basically, on the first one, I just want to show you what it is. This, this is the project, exit 90, 88, 85, 83, and 82. And again, what the next two slides, this one and, and this slide, what they, basically, we want to show the, the folks in Columbia, the DOT... we want to show the, the folks in Columbia, the DOT and the CIB bank is, we're not, we're not doing nothing and asking them to fix what we haven't done. We are doing a lot of stuff here and we're asking them to help us to do even more. And I think that's real important that they know that they're, we're not just, you know, waiting for them to do something for us, we're doing things for ourselves. The I-77 project itself, York County is ranked as one of the five fastest growing counties in South Carolina. The DOT Long Range Transportation Plan lists four out of the five interchanges as unfunded or fiscally constrained. The South Carolina Transportation Plan lists Exit 90, excuse me, lists Exit 90 as, excuse me, as the highest ranked deficient interchange on I-77 that is not programmed in the interstate. Economic development is our primary need for interchange improvements, and that's real important on this, on this application. In 2014, $270 million was invested and created 56, or 5,670 jobs. The five interchange, interchanges have the capacity to produce nearly 41,000 new jobs at full buildout conditions. And full buildout conditions depending on where you act can be anywhere from five to 10 years. The project, projected project cost is 215.9 million dollars. The CIB grant request is 186.5 dollars. And the York, York County local match is 138.2 mil, uh, $2 million. And as you can see below, we've got 29.4 in cash equivalent contributions and 108.9 in local improvements to the state highway system.
I have a question for you.
Yes, sir.
I'm a little confused on the total project cost and the grant request and our local match. Those don't add up there, so I'm trying to make sure I understand.
Yeah, it's, it's actually, it's, it's, it's what's supposed to happen. The, the grant request added with the 29.4 million, it was a typo on the slide, it should have been, I'm thinking 29.3 million, so.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, I caught that this afternoon, actually, right before I was coming here. This slide right here basically breaks down everything. And the, we've talked about the interchanges, total costs, matching funds, requested CIB funding. The most, to me, the most important section on this is employment projections because we've been told it's based on new employment and future employment, not, not current employment. Doesn't hurt to have current, current employment in there, but again, it's based on future economic development jobs. And so when you look at Exit 90, right now, they got 6,480 jobs and we've projected at buildout 5,656 positions. You have Gold Hill Road, Exit 88, and right now, you've got 1,178, but it's projected out 17,793 jobs. Exit 85, current is 7,280 and projected 4,656. Sutton Road, and they do not have a lot of traffic right there, but we're not basing this on the traffic. You know, they've got 1,339 jobs. That build out, they could be up to 9,474 jobs. And Sully's Road, of course, Exit 82, current 1,156. At build out, they could jump up to 3,184 jobs. And that's what they're looking for at the CIB. That's what we're being briefed on.
Bill? Excuse me. I was just gonna say on the projected, you mean additional jobs, right?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, sir, Mr. Johnson.
That's what I, because he's actually showing a projection for less jobs than they currently exist.
Yeah, no, no.
These are in addition to...
In addition to the current ones, yes, sir, I'm sorry.
The Exit 2, is that A, B, and C or just the?
Right now, it is down by A, B, and C. But what happens with that is now...
That's what it looked like, the, it looked like the numbers had been updated, but not the description.
Yeah.
And I was curious about whether the jobs, if the job projection included A, B, and B as well.
It is A, B, and C, yes, sir. And again, what happens is the CIB will, they will, if they approve this to move forward, they will come down and they will look at the intersections and, and, you know, some of these numbers, the cost money, the cost numbers can change. And they're not, and when we start it, they're not gonna give us all the money at one time. It's, it's gonna be phased in and we're gonna identify with them the highest priority and work our way through it.
And I, and I think kind of the mentality too is that it would be probably more appropriate to consider and include A and B just because of tremendous traffic imbalance with Sutton Road. It's 10 times more traffic than Sully's Road, Cherry Road. And then the SIB always has that potential with the total package to say, hey, this looks good, but you need to take this one particular out.
Yes, sir.
If we don't have it in there, then there's no way they can consider it.
Mr. Roddy.
Question just come up, looking at some of the, the 29.4 million in cash equivalent contribution, where's, where do those funds come from? How do...
That would be Exit 88, the Gold Hill. Am I funded by Pennies for Progress? Am I correct on that?
So we're, we're using what we're doing with pennies?
Anywhere else.
So my, my, I guess my question is, we're using what we're already having placed, doing with pennies to call it a match with what?
Yes, sir.
And we're investing already.
Yeah.
It's part of the...
Yeah. Any monies that we can use that we've already invested as the match, that's allowed.
So it's kind of like they're giving us credit for what we're already doing or have planned?
Yes, sir.
Okay, gotcha.
Any other questions for Bill?
Final slide of, you know, we, we need to submit the application to the Infrastructure Bank this week. The CIB board meeting is April 28th. They will, if they like what they see, they will come down and they will physically visit and see what we've got to ensure that it's what we say it is, which is okay. We will respond to any comments, any questions or anything that they have. And sometimes they'll have you make a formal presentation, sometimes they won't, we'll be ready for it.
I have one more quick question.
Yes, sir, Mr. Roddy.
When we submit these type of applications with, with multiple projects on them, is it, is it an all or nothing scenario or can, or is there a situation where they say, well, we like this one, we don't like this one?
That's kind of what I just said earlier.
They can piecemeal it, yes.
The package is there, they can cut away, but if it's not part of the package, they're not gonna add it.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And you don't really, I'm kind of hearing contentment from the council with this wasn't an action item, was it? You just needed to, do you need an action?
I would, it would be nice for y'all to tell us to please take the application in because if we miss it, if we miss the deadline, which will cost us three to six months, and that's three to six months for other people putting their projects ahead of us.
So let's have a motion.
We need, I'll make a motion that go ahead and submit the application to Infrastructure Bank this week.
As presented.
As presented.
Thank you.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Those no, thanks, Bill.
Thank you.
Next item, consider approval of nominated applicants for services and boards and commissions. I'll let Mr. Johnson take over.
Move to approve Van Steine Economic Development Board, Doug Meyer Kuno Economic Development Board, Jim Bradford Economic Development Board, Mark Howey Economic Development Board, Odell Bailey York County Forever, Janet Steele York County Forever, and Steve Field York County Forever.
And if there's no nominations from the floor, do we have a motion?
That wasn't.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was a motion.
No, sir.
Discussion, all those in favor say aye. Those no, next item. Consider, council to consider first reading of an ordinance to suspend the acceptance of rezoning applications for RC 1, RC 2, RD 1, RD 2, PD, and BD 3 districts within the unincorporated area of the Fort Mill Township where the proposed rezoning includes residential uses, single-family and multifamily, to suspend the acceptance of site plans and preliminary plaits for residential projects, single-family and multifamily located within the unincorporated area of the Fort Mill Township to end the suspension of, on December 31st, 2016, to provide for a public hearing and to provide for other minors related there too.
Move to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. Winkler.
I guess I'll start the discussion. I, as I've talked to staff and other council members about this, I do not, and citizens as a whole, support whatever we want to call it, moratorium suspension of this, that, you know. But as we've done many times, I support moving it at least to a second so that we can have a public hearing and get more input from our citizens on what's going on, you know, what they think and feel about it. So I will support it at this stage, but I have a lot of issues with it going forward, so.
Okay, Mr. Roddy.
Including some, let, some correspondence we got from our attorney.
I've, I've been able to talk to a couple of people who are in the, I guess, the building and development and, you know, looking back how the housing market was, was booming a while back. And then, of course, we know what happened in 2008, 2009, and now we're starting to see, see some movement, some new rooftops coming in. But obviously, Fort Mill probably didn't, didn't suffer as much as some of the other areas throughout York County or throughout South Carolina, even the nation. Fort Mill, that township, and that even the unincorporated areas have really taken off, even during some of the downturn, Fort Mill was still, had something going. And just hearing how, hearing and seeing how some, some builders and people were suffering and now things are coming back pretty much full bloom. I mean, it's, it's, it's busting at the seams, you know. There's a solution out there, I don't know if this is the right one to do. But certainly, I guess what's being asked for is not to rezone property because I'm sure there are some, some areas in the unincorporated area that will allow housing and, and some residential or commercial development to go on. I'm, I'm not sure how effective this would be if we're only doing it to the end of the year. You know, what will we see out of this? Will it, will it ultimately stop the growth in Fort Mill in, in, in that area? Probably not. I mean, because, you know, there, there are subdivisions coming up, they've been annexed into the city. And, and part of what, what I've been told and with the limited research I've done with, with Fort Mill is the city is starting to annex more property into the city that's allowing more buildings. So at some point, if the city keeps annexing, some of these unincorporated areas are gonna be in the city anyway and they're gonna be out of our control. So I'm not sure if this is the right thing to do. I know we have some other things coming up later in, in a meeting, but I'm just, I'm just not sold that this is the right thing to do. But, but it's not, maybe it's not as bad on paper, but if you ask people that's in that profession, you know, you, you're putting a, putting a chokehold on them in some regards and who knows what kind of business deals are already out there with, with something pending. You know, we're talking about people's livelihood that, that make a living, that pay the tax base for us to sit up here and make these decisions, that's putting this money into, to our local economy. So I would be real hesitant because I don't know what's underneath the surface that we're, we're choking out or we're suffocating. Because we all know that, that conversations and, and business deals, they take place way before things get up here. And so I don't know what's out there, what's lurking, what's on the horizon, the ground swell, as people call it, you know, what's going on. And, and I would, I would love to hear from people who have those type situations going on, say, hey, I'm in, I'm in conversations about this piece of land, I'm, I'm trying to sell my land and, and this is a prime piece of property to do with its rooftops or something commercial. So I would be real hesitant to, to put that kind of restraint to say that we won't be accepting them because I just don't know what's out there. And I would hate to be with my limited knowledge about what's going on in the real estate and all. I would be real hesitant to do that. But I would love to hear from people that's in that business that have that concern. Let me know what's going on because I'm in Rock Hill. You know, it's easy for me to look and see all the traffic and the busting at the seams, but I want to know, are we, how much is this gonna affect people's livelihood who make a living in the real estate? And how much are we gonna be holding up a potential sale that may be on the horizon? Those would be my concerns. And I don't know if we have enough information to make that call right now to, to support it. So I'm, I'm kind of 51, 49, I don't know which way to 51 right now, but I, I would be real hesitant to, to, to go with that. I see Chad got a chuckle out of that.
I'm over camera.
But I'm, I'm...
One of them.
Yeah. I'm, I'm good.
Okay, I'll go to end the line. Ms. Cox?
As far as I'm concerned, the reason why we're entertaining this is because there is a serious growth management issue that we have in Fort Mill. What we need to do is to figure out a real way that we can have an effect on slowing down traffic concerns and the safety concerns that have to do with the roads and infrastructure. My concern is that this is not going to get us there. I am prepared to move forward and agree to first reading on this, but I am going to say this, I don't like to play political games. If we're gonna come up with a solution, let's come up with a real solution. What I know, I previously asked for and the direction that we got from our staff was that things that needed to be done were that traffic impact analysis be required on every project and that that, our ordinances be changed to require that. And that we also have the authority as council to refuse to either rezone or to allow permitting for properties that are going to dump additional traffic on a roadway that it cannot sustain. That is what we're trying to do. This does not get us there. I am gonna vote for this, but I hope that we have a proposed ordinance at our next council meeting that deals with TAs, as I just said, that allows us that, to deny approval on the basis of safety and road infrastructure concerns. There were additionally, some additional, the CIP. If we really want to make a difference, we have to get the CIP done. That has to be a part of this. I'm just, I'm just very concerned that this looks like it appeases folks by saying moratorium. And given what we've been provided on council as to what is the legal ramifications, what we can and can't do, if we're, by the time we get to third reading, this is going to do nothing. And so I want the public to understand that I'm here, I'm looking for a reasonable solution, and I hope that the builders and developers will come to the table and let's all come up with, with the program that works. But right now, this is what we have to start with.
Mr. Johnson.
I think the real question of this is what will happen in eight months? And I think that's an excellent question. I think the question is how do we take that eight months and do we actually pass something meaningful at the end of that eight months? If this is purely to freeze, then this is a ordinance that should not pass and no one on this council should vote to do that. The, the goal of this should not be to stop residential housing just for the purposes of stopping residential housing. If instead, this is an attempt by council to take a step back for a second and say, here are four or five questions that from a development standpoint, we need answers. We need answers from our staff, we need answers from our community. And what I have found, especially over the last six, eight months, year, is that our staff is overwhelmed. They are overwhelmed by the amount of work that is put on them just from normal building and with the tremendous growth we have, they're unable to go tackle some of these issues that we've asked them to look at. What I would like to see done is, and hand in hand with this, is that a committee, a study group be set up. That study group consists of anywhere from 14 to 15 individuals, made up of industry and citizens, average citizens who would sit there with them. And that they tackle these four or five issues and that they bring a plan back to this council in late October that could actually, actually be, actually be adopted into ordinance form. Not something, some pie in the scab, but an actual plan. What should York County look like in 10 years and what are the ordinances that make you do that? In order to do that, we have to actually accomplish a couple of other things, though. In order to do that, we have to actually accomplish a couple other things, though. One, we have to have a comprehensive land use plan that has been adopted by this council. That study group has to have that, they need that tool. We also have to have a comprehensive infrastructure plan, a CIP. And my understanding from talking with staff is that a CIP could be ready by September, my, based off of RFAT's, uh, study they're currently doing.
Yes, what I said, it wasn't, it wasn't a county CIP, what's going on is RFATs has a collector road study for the, um, RFATs area, which I think will accomplish many of the goals that you're looking for. That's a $250,000 study that's being funded by the federal government, uh, they had a kickoff meeting last week, they should be done with it in October, and the scope, as I understand, what it's supposed to be is to establish baseline conditions for the area, um, including capacity analysis of the roads and intersections at issue, make recommendations as to what improvements would need to be done for those intersections in those roads, including future roads, where right of way would need to be, and again, I think a general, and I'm saying a very general cost estimate. So, instead of the county duplicating those efforts, and so, those are underway, that would be my recommendation, that since they should be done in October, that should give us a good starting point that you're looking for.
But that doesn't cover the entire area, I mean, that's, that's, that's the deficiency.
It would be for the entire RFATs area, which would take it out to Lake Wiley and through the areas of high growth, and then our thought at, at the staff level is then we could use that as the model to do what's in the COG in the upcoming year.
That's, that's part of this beginning, these are all pieces we're going to have to put together. And I think it's very important that this council not just simply agree to, to freeze rezonings just for the sake of doing it. We should, we should require a real plan come out of this, and if we're not serious about giving this group the power, this study group, the power to do what needs to be done, to help shape, and the questions that need to be answered need to be posed, not necessarily by us, but by our planning department. Our planning department needs to be able to sit down and say, here are the four or five issues we need the most help with, we need your guidance in, hand that off to this study group, and let them help create this. I've spoken, I've had conversations with several people in the industry who are more than happy to serve on this type of group, and I've had conversations with average individuals who want to serve on this group. This can't be, pure politics is right, Ms. Cox is right, pure politics is let's put a freeze on, let's not build anything, and let's make the people who are unhappy in the greater Fort Mill, Tegukay area, happy about it. What it won't do is it won't stop traffic, and it won't stop all the little things that right now, right now, we have about 10,000 homes that are going to be built no matter what, no matter what we do, vast majority of those sitting in actually municipalities. We have to have a plan. Part of my, part of my problem with serving on council has been, we don't seem to be able to tackle the large issues. Large issues stump government, not just county council, state government, federal government. The large issues are the hardest. We have an opportunity to reshape the way York County looks. We have an opportunity to reshape the way the Fort Mill Township, the Lake Wiley area, the, and everything looks, but that cannot happen without a comprehensive review of why we want to do it. And in my opinion, you can't continue forward eating up every last piece of land while you're doing that, and that's what I'm asking. I'm asking us to take a look at that. Do I have concerns? I, I, I've certainly read, uh, our county attorney's, uh, legal brief regarding, uh, the suspension of exceptions of site plans, um, you know, that, that certainly needs to be debated by this council, whether or not that is a legal, you know, whether we can legally do that or not. And if we can't, then we do need to move forward, at least as to the rezoning applications, but we can't continue to do nothing. We can't continue to ask for CIPs, we can't continue to ask for this and ask that. We've been asking a year and a half, two years, and what we find is that we don't really have a plan, we don't have what we need, and I'm asking you all to give power to this study group to make this happen, and if that needs to be somehow referenced in this, then that's what we do, but we've got to create this, we've got, when I talk to the people who are willing to serve, they're actually excited about what they can do for York County, and, and, and we should be excited that someone is willing to spend volunteer hours to do that. So, I, I'm asking that we at least get through first reading, especially as to the, except, the suspension of accepting, of rezoning applications.
Can I just ask one question?
Yes, ma'am.
You know, since Councilman Johnson has proposed this, is there a designation of who is going to serve on this? Because to me, that's key. You can get a, you can get a study group, and, and no offense to anyone who's ever served on that, you can get a study to say whatever you want, I would like to know how far we are in terms of designating who would serve on this, this, there needs to be full council involvement on the designation and the people that are going to serve on this committee, and that's, that's my point in saying that, and I'm, I'm sure that there are ideas that have gone, um, and that you have specific ideas, but I hope that this entire council is, if this passes, is involved in the designation of that group, that's my point.
I think if we get, we get past second reading, this council has to get very serious immediately about what the makeup of that group looks like. I certainly have my thoughts. Again, though...
But the makeup of this group may determine what second, whether we pass second reading, and I think that's where we've got...
We'll, we'll make sure it's a council decision.
Well, I have no problem with us debating the makeup of that group, we certainly should do it in public. I think that our planning staff has to have some say in that, they have to, we have to, you have to put qualified people, you can't pick a random person off the street and ask them to plan.
Can we get finished before we start talking about something that's not part of the motion?
Well, and I, and I certainly would, I have no problem with that, though.
Mr. Henderson?
Well, first of all, um, you know, I've, I've been battling this and trying to figure out what to do with it for, for a long, long time, and I am glad that, even though we disagree somewhat here, uh, I'm glad that we finally realize that we might mess around and get buried out there on the middle of the channel of Lake Wiley when it all fills in with silt. Because they're going to build a house over us, and, and we won't, they'll never know we were there. I, uh, I would like to make, I want to get it clear about council, what, about the interpretation of the, um, what you had sent us earlier about the Platts. Now, I want to make sure that, that I've got this right, in other words, the rezoning, we will be able to hold up, but, but Platts is off, off limits, is that what you're saying?
That's a, that's essentially what we're saying, yes, sir.
Wow. I just wish that, um, I just wish that some of this could have been known much sooner than tonight about that portion, and, uh, maybe we could have, uh, went, did something a little differently concerning this whole situation, such as what maybe, what would be discussed, uh, coming up next. But I, I want to review, if I could, um, with Ms. Miller concerning COG, uh, what, please describe to me again what, what you said about COG being involved here in Lake Wiley. I heard, I heard my name called.
Uh, my point is RFATs only cover so much of the Lake Wiley area as the MPO, they handle the transportation for the county, the other portion of it is the COG, and so, in answer to Ms. Cox's question about how much of the area would be studied, uh, it would only be the RFATs study, and I do understand her point that she wants the entire county studied, so my hope would be we would use RFATs ultimate deliverable as a model, then to move on and do the COG area, the rest of the area of the county not covered by RFATs.
Well, the word COG kind of turns me off, because it, you know, somewhere out there, it, it, I, I just tend to think that, um, we will get to the point to where we won't be able to control our own destiny if COG runs the whole show.
No... Your patients use this as a geographic designation, basically, the parts of the county that are not RFATs.
I, I totally understand, I just thought I'd throw that in as a bonus. All right, now, now, um, I'm going to support this on first reading based upon principle as far as realizing that this, you know, that's what's good about a three reading system, uh, is that you can, you can change it, you can modify it, you can totally reverse it, eliminate it, let it die, whatever, by the third reading. The gentleman said earlier here tonight about the possibility of letting something pass, and then we see what's in it. Well, it's not necessarily so here, you know, and I understand his point, and I agree with him when it comes to a one-time deal, uh, but whenever there's a three reading system, it, it can be a beautiful thing, because you can adjust, you can change, and you can modify, so for the sake of moving forward one time, and based upon what else comes along here, we'll decide as to whether I will, uh, support the second round. Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
Yeah, uh, thank you, I find myself in this mood, Mr. Winkler, and it turns out a lot of us, well, there's a couple things I want to make clear. One, um, if this is still a moratorium at third reading, I will not support it, um, and as it's presented, half of it, we can do now without the ordinance. But the thing that really bothers me is in the past, we've had opportunities to, to address some of this stuff ahead of time and have never chosen to, uh, to, to take advantage of that, we're going to talk about one of them in a minute, um, and I just want, I don't want another opportunity to actually, to do something about this to go away. I've, I've heard about, I hear what you're talking about, Citizens Committee, I think, uh, Committee of Citizens with, with, has builders and, and citizens and planners, uh, could come up with something, and, and, I mean, we all live here, and, and I, I just hope that that's where we're going, but I do want to make it clear that, uh, that I won't support a moratorium going further, but I'd actually like to speed it up, I don't want to wait till after second reading to figure out what we're doing with the committee. I'd like to, to see that, I agree with, with Councilmember Cox that it needs to have, uh, input, I don't think we need to each put a representative on there, I think we need, we all need to have qualified folks that, that can come to the table and hash this out as quickly as possible, but I would hope to see something, uh, something, before we get much further in the, before we get much further in, in second reading, I'd like to know more about where we're going and how we're going to get there.
Could I just, a moment, I know I spoke already, but I'd like some clarification on a couple things. One, we don't need this to pass to put together a citizens committee, um, we can direct staff to put together a citizens committee, whether we have first, second, or third reading, and get started on that, and we can get some input, um, you know, and I hear people say we haven't done anything, you know, we've been working for, ever since I've been on council, to put together a comprehensive land use plan, which does address some issues that we've been talking about. We did a significant change in rezoning last year, which addressed some of the issues that we've been talking about. You know, I, I, I don't want to change so many things that we don't realize some of the changes we're doing affect something else. As I said, I, I, I'm going to support this first reading, but I have a lot of concerns, I've got a lot of clients who are realtors, I've talked to different people, and a lot of times, what I hear from the unincorporated areas, you know, we'd like more nice restaurants, we'd like more of this or that, those come because of rooftops. And sometimes, you know, I was in corporate world for a long time before I started doing what I do now, they may look at growth projections and try to get their restaurant in a little ahead of the curve to save a little bit on real estate costs and other things, and where they see the growth coming, but if they're looking at that and thinking about that, and all of a sudden they start hearing, no, we're not growing anymore, we're stopping it, I'm afraid we may affect some of that future growth. But as I said, I, I wanted to clarify that, because we have done some things, we've been talking for two years, I've been up here, but I do think we need to allow the citizens to have input, and that's why I want us to get to second reading.
Let me, uh, wrap it up, I'm sure I'm not going to shock any council member up here, by saying that, um, and let me back up a second, I understand the logic in routine situations where, well, let's allow it to go to second reading, to allow true vetting, but, um, I mean, something this, like this, I, I cannot support at all. I mean, it's got a deadline where it ends in December. Normal process, three, four, or five months, so you get maybe by the time we're done, a couple months of effect, so makes no sense. Presently, we can do rezoning, uh, have a hearing, we can turn it down if we don't agree with it. You have the traffic impact analysis that we've asked to put teeth in, which I think is the avenue to deal with these problems, because the road demands of traffic has spurred this, although at rush hour, you're going to have traffic concerns. If you have no growth, you kill a county. So, we've got a good problem to deal with, and that's growth. Um, and certainly, I understand the concerns of the Fort Mill area and the need for smart growth, I'm all about that, but we have that option now, per some comments Mr. Winkler just made, um, the ability to have conditional zoning that we added, the zoning changes that were made, and if we put teeth in the traffic impact analysis, nobody can argue the fairness of that, and it can stop growth where it's just too much of a burden on a road system. You're creating, for the sake of frustration because of lack of the perceived staff's inability to address the concerns over the past 18 months, we're coming forward with an image thing instead of a functional, common sense result. I feel like we're in the Act 388 motion right now. We're not addressing the concern, we're addressing a perception, and until we address the concern, we're not doing anything constructive here. Uh, it's great to have a committee, yes, the council can help choose the people on that committee, no, we're not approving a freeze tonight, and I know that the biggest damage we're going to do is economically. How much? That's debatable, but nobody can legitimately say that this is not a negative impact on image for a county. It's too much government interference, there's too many livelihoods, uh, it's, in my mind, it lacks common sense, I'm all about providing for smart growth, I'm not about reactionary conduct of a governing body just to make people feel good, it has no punch to it, it has no logic to it. So, in no way I can approve this, even on first reading, even, even the Fort Mill Council, the Tegukay Council, both are very much opposed to this, and they're in the heart of this, this is their area. Lake Wiley doesn't have a governing board, but their chamber, which I guess is the closest thing, they're adamantly opposed to this. Mount Pleasant, if you've ever been to Mount Pleasant, which my kid went to College of Charleston, hitting Daniel Allen at any time of day was a disaster nightmare, but they admit, per an article that was in their paper, that it was a bad move, so I see absolutely zero logic in this, for that reason, I'm not going to support it. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Mr. Chairman?
Oppose no. Yes, ma'am.
I need some clarification, but you've taken the motion, just so council knows, there were no changes made to the ordinance that were done by motion, so my direction then, based on the motion and what you just approved, I'm keeping this ordinance exactly as presented. So, my next step, unless someone tells me differently, it needs to go to the Planning Commission, exactly as it is in, in your packet, on May 9th, and then I could, if this is what council would like, I could advertise it for a public hearing and schedule it first, second reading, a public hearing on May 16th.
So, we're actually, third reading at best would be the first in June?
Yes, sir.
So now we're in July before it really...
Well, we don't meet the first, first Monday in June, so...
Oh, wow, so here we go, so normal process will probably outdo the ordinance, but anyway, it's done, so we can move...
Well, I would, uh, yeah, based on, on that, I would, uh, recommend that we in some way direct, uh, toward the committee we were, we were talking about, uh, before second reading, and before it goes to the Planning Commission.
Yes, sir, Mr. Roddy?
Karen, you need some clarification on the votes?
Uh, well, I was a no.
I was a no.
So, two of us. So, um, go through that again, Chad?
Well, no, I think we need to give her better direction. Well, no, I think we need to give her better direction. Had she, had she asked the question...
Well, we just passed the motion as presented, so what are you saying?
The, as Mr. Winkler said, we can, we can direct staff, we can direct staff to form a committee and we can also direct her to hold off on putting it on, sending it to Planning Commission. And definitely hold off on advertising for public hearing unless we're...
We need, we need comments here. That's one council member's suggestion.
I guess knowing that we're not even going to meet the first, which is June, and if we delay it, then we're over into July, which we're only going to meet...
I think that part of this issue has to do with legal counsel. I think we probably need to take a break and have an executive session because part of this issue has to do with legal counsel that we were provided, that we could not have an opportunity to discuss before we took the vote. So I'll make a motion that we move to executive session.
That might be a wisdom spoken there. We agree? Do we have a second?
Go to executive session?
Yes.
I'll second.
Any discussion on that? So question on the motion. Take a five-minute break to go to executive session to discuss? Yes. Thank you for the sign language. I appreciate that. Yes. Question on the motion. All those in favor say aye. All those no. Let's take a five-minute break and be back by 8:25. Hearing and presenting ordinance revisions to create a Lake Wiley overlay defined as the area east of Riddle Mill Road, south of 557, east of Kingsbury Road, southeast of Highway 49, north, northeast of South Param Road, north and south of Campbell Road, within the remaining District 2 boundary to Lake Wiley. Such ordinances revisions would include reducing the maximum density permitted in RC1, RC2, RD1, RD2 zoning districts and are limiting the amount of development in these zoning districts. 25% of the area are construction of 35 homes annually and provide for conditional zoning regarding multi-level, multifamily structures and hotels to at least one mile from any portion of the Lake Wiley shore or to the west side of Highway 274, whichever is further and west of Highway 557 and north of New Hope Road.
Move to, for discussion?
Need a second?
I'll second.
Okay, discussion. I'll start down that way and just do it like we did before.
I'm going to let him start with the question.
Or do you want to go ahead and start, Bruce?
That would be awful nice.
Okay, well, you go right ahead.
All right. As opposed to what came up two weeks ago or so and as opposed to what my councilman, my fellow councilman just proposed and passed, I know he knows his district better than I do and I feel like that I know mine at the same level as each of you do. I have been trying to get something, something accomplished to this level for quite, quite some time based on the same logic that was just presented concerning the other item. And again, I realize this is for discussion at this moment and that discussion only, but I would really prefer now, based upon seeking a compromise, at least in my district. And I hope that you would consider a compromise elsewhere where there seems to be major problems such as the overcrowding and the, just the wildfire growth that we are experiencing. And it, but as opposed to the other one, the alternative for District 2 would be, first of all, I want to mention, when I suggested this and I wrote, originally presented this to other council members and planning early March, I did not state anything about a Lake Wiley overlay. So I would like that removed and I would like it defined, just like I had written it then, because of what we were trying to accomplish. And to read in part, well, council to discuss and provide direction to staff regarding preparing and presenting ordinance revisions to create and defined as the area shall include, in District 2, shall include or consist east of Riddle Mill Road, south of 557, east of Kingsbury Road, south, southeast of Highway 49, north, northeast of South Param Road, north and south of Campbell Road, within the remaining District 2 boundary to Lake Wiley. Such ordinances, ordinance revisions would include reducing the maximum density permitted in the RC1, RC2, RD1, and RD2 zoning districts and/or limiting the amount of development in these zoning districts to 25% of the proposed area or construction of 35 homes annually, whichever comes first. And let me explain right there. That within itself will kill two birds with one stone. Talking about, based on the same logic that we pitched just a few minutes ago, about being willing to upset the apple cart a little bit. So the thing is, folks, like we, we've all come to the agreement, something has to be done to slow down. Well, here's your compromise. Has nothing to do with RUD, agricultural, or any other areas of the county that would have, you know, larger developers or whatever. But, but I'm going to tell you that if we do not take this into account in these locations, based upon these boundaries, if we don't slow it down, and I would like to mention that CIP, I agree with that and the traffic analysis study as well needs to be part of this because it all ties together. And again, I would hope that permitting to reduce permits in the RC1, RC2, RD1, and RD2 where the problematic areas are at can't be denied. It's creating more and more traffic, probably more accidents, creating more reason to be concerned about an evacuation being mass chaos. I'm asking that this, that staff present something that, as far as getting the wording a little bit better, but don't lose the bulk of this. Do not lose the theme of it and what I'm trying to accomplish. But again, let, let these larger developers build in phases, not stop them altogether, not totally eliminate work, not kill somebody's livelihood, their mortgages and so forth. They've already got loans for and so forth and so on. So why not allow a compromise? And furthermore, and if this has to be a second part, totally separate, possibly, I don't know. I just know it's in this now and this is something I've been trying to do for the longest. And I think it has to be recognized now. It has to be reckoned with. There's no choice. And to provide for conditional zoning regarding multi-level, multifamily structures, hotels, offices, to at least one mile from any portion of the Lake Wiley shore or to the west side of Highway 274, whichever is further and west of Highway 557 and north of New Hope Road. That's a lot of information, but I'm going to tell you, it's vital. It's vital. And I hope this council will have the political will to come up with a compromise. This is a compromise. You're not going total, you're not going to totally, totally wipe out construction or stop it, freeze it. You're not going, you're not going to be guessing about when it can stop, when it can slow down, or when it can speed up again. Permitting, folks, it's already on record that permitting can be reduced without any major legal repercussions. This is, it was told to me more than a year ago that Bruce, you might be on to something with this. And then suddenly it just dissipated. It rotted on the vine. So at this point now, I hope, and again, folks, we're to the point now where we've got to act or we are going to be in major trouble. It's going to be a major problem on 49. It's already a major problem. So it's going to be a major problem up and down 557. But be honest with you, it's already a major problem. So what's the cure for bad roads, bad traffic, more accidents? Build more houses. Insane. Let's slow it down. Let's play catch-up a little bit. Let's be reasonable. Please. Thank you.
I'll start on this end. Mr. Williams?
Thank you. Thanks, as council to discuss and provide direction to staff regarding Lake Wiley overlay and a couple of emails and actually what they, what led to the confusion whether we were talking about revising the Lake Wiley overlay plan that had a couple of years of input on and, or creating a new one. I guess it sounds like you're talking about creating a new one. The direction that I would, that I would provide is to revise that one that had the input in it and get the input and finish it. In my, in my opinion, that's one of the opportunities that we had to do something about growth and didn't, but rather than creating a new one and starting over, I think it would be worth looking into that. And your idea, we did, we did reduce some of the maximum density in December, so seeing it died on the vine is a little unfair, but, but I know what you mean. But that would be, that would be my, that would be what I would hope to see is to revive the Lake Wiley overlay that's already had a whole bunch of time and effort put into it.
Sir, if I could, I was mainly talking about multi-level, multifamily, dying on the vine.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Johnson?
I guess I'm somewhat struggling to figure out what the discussion is. The discussion is simply, should we consider an ordinance, which is what I think this says? I have no problem debating an ordinance. I have no problem with staff drafting an ordinance and us debating that ordinance. So there, I mean, I don't, I guess I don't know what else to say.
That's the question before us.
Have them perform, come up with some ordinances. Mrs. Cox?
I second in the motion so that we could have some discussion on this. And obviously, I think that the issues that are, that Bruce's district faces in the Carolina Water Service district area needs to have some protections just as much as what we just previously voted on. And we have limited staff time. I would like to see, it seems to me that, I'm struggling a little bit just to figure out how we're going to, what the action item is, but I am in favor of ensuring that every portion of the county is looked at and that provisions are put in place, whether it's an entire freeze, which is what was previously voted on just in the action item prior to that, or some discussion on slowing permitting. And if that is done, I can't think of a recommendation or any legal analysis that's been done on that issue. So that's where I'm, I'm a little bit, I'm in favor of looking at that. I think that it's, whatever study group is going to look at, what are we going to do about the growth management issue ought to include the areas that Bruce's area is in and that we ought to have an open and honest discussion about all of the ways to accomplish that. And so that's where I'm going to fall on the issue.
Mr. Roddy?
Does anyone have any advil? I'm getting a headache. Seriously. I didn't support the last, the last piece that was dealing with Fort Mill and, you know, stunting some of the growth or slowing it down and not accepting permits. I mean, basically, I, now I see why Councilman Henderson wanted five to go in front of four because he's using that momentum to kind of justify his area. Had it been the other way around, this one probably wouldn't have got as much discussion because he knew the Fort Mill one had a lot of, a lot of support behind it. So, you know, it's kind of a piggyback deal. But I'm still trying to get my mind around limiting four areas, four zoning classifications to 35 homes a year. I mean, what, I'm trying to see, what does that look like? You know, what's the basis of saying 35? Why not 15? Why not 45? Why not 65? So I'm still trying to get in my mind how that's going to look, how that's going to be fair across the board because once you hit house number 35 and what if someone wants to build a single-family home who owns a piece of property? What are you going to tell them? Well, we've reached our max this year. Come back January 1st.
My very point.
So how, what does that look like? What does that feel like? How does that, how does that function? And from my vantage point, I'm looking out, I heard the claps after Bruce got finished speaking, of slowing things down and I looked to my left a little bit and says, moratoriums kills jobs. So this is basically another moratorium that's going to slow jobs down and kill jobs. So from my vantage point, it's some pushing and pulling, but I just, I'm not a firm believer of, if there's not a demand for it, builders won't come in and want to build. I mean, we saw what happened when the demand went away. Jobs went away. So now that we're seeing housing coming back, and I know this, this sounds like a broken record, but I've said it numerous of times when issues of that Lake Wiley community come before us, my easiest answer is incorporate. Take your destiny into your own hands. Get you a mayor, get you a city council, get you a town administrator, get you a town attorney. And you can do exactly what you want to do if you incorporate because I think it's so unfair when we get so many issues from that area. And the solution would be, if you had that municipality, you can take that destiny into your own hands, people that live in your own community versus coming down and asking someone who's in the southern part of Rock Hill to decide that fate, to decide people's livelihoods, to decide that situation. It's, it's putting me in a real, I mean, I signed up for this, but this is real, this is really unfair to me to make that call to say someone can't build house number 36 in that area. It's a real unfair call for me to make that call. So I didn't, I didn't support the last one that, that basically does the same thing here. So I'm not going to support this one, but it's, I say again, and we had small, small talk about doing something along the line of incorporating over in that Lake Wiley community when we were talking about all the H tax money, I think it was, and building some of these wrecked parks and all that stuff. Yeah, that sounded good. Yeah, we'll consider that, but just go ahead and pass this so we can get the parks or the pool and clover, you know. And then all that stuff, that died on the vine. But the solution that I think that will serve that community A1 to the letter or what it's intended for, please, please, consider incorporating because you guys have so much tax dollars come through there from, from wherever, residential, unincorporated hotel, I mean, not the hotel, but, but restaurant tax. It's booming over there with some of this money that's coming through and it comes to us and you guys have to come back and ask us for permission to do things when if you were incorporated, your city council, your mayor, your town administrator can control that destiny, can control that tax dollar and probably spend it more wisely than we can from a county standpoint. So that would be my, that would be my offer and it's been for the last several years because there are some good times and some good, very good things going on over in that community. community, but you're not able to capitalize on them, because it has to, you guys have to come back to us, to ask us to do things in that community. And it's enough people there to incorporate, it's enough tax base there, but I have to say this, people hesitate to incorporate, because they know the taxes are gonna go up, they're gonna have to pay someone to be a town administrator, they're gonna have to pay to be, have a city council. But you want all the services, but at the same time, those services and those decisions come with a cost, and you want to get them through us with little, with little financial input, but I can tell you, the benefit of incorporating that area will be tremendous for the area. And you can take that, that into your own hands, your own destiny, and you can control it.
I'm sorry, I should've said it on the first go-around, but I see a pattern here now, so let's not have clapping, because that interrupts the flow, and it's disrespectful to the chamber.
All right. Mr. Winkler. I just realized, and maybe I'm a little slow, it took me 15 months to do it, but I just realized why it costs us so much to cool this building. A lot of talk and a lot of hot air comes out of this chamber. For me, you know, when I've had rezoning in my district, I've gone out and knocked on people's doors and talked to them, because I believe in input from the public. That's why I take calls, and I'll, you know, sometimes I regret my personal cell phone being on, on my county cards, but I still take the calls, and I'm, I'm proud to do it, because it's what the people elected me to do, and that's why I support getting to a public hearing. So, I agree with Councilmember Williams. I don't want to rewrite the thing, but if we, if we can dust off the old overlay that we talked about before, that we never got to vote on, we did have some public hearings along the way on some different things, but we never really got through this thing as far as a vote, let's dust it off, bring it back out, get a first reading, get it to a public hearing, so people can input. But I'll tell you, on this one, just like I did the last one, well, before I get to that point, we've addressed zoning densities last year. We changed a whole bunch of densities and a whole bunch of zones. My father was a general contractor, well, he was a foreman for a general contractor, and he also was a builder on his own for many, many years, and I've never known a large developer to go in and build every home in a development all at one time, anyway. They phase in their developments, which is basically what Councilmember Henderson is talking about doing with limiting, except I'm not sure legally we can do that, just as I have some legal concerns about the last one. So, with that said, I would like to see an ordinance put before us that we can discuss, we can have the public vote on, but, you know, just as with the last one, I have serious concerns, and, you know, may or may not support it. I think a lot of what both these ordinance are asking to do, we already have in our authority to do.
Let me wrap it up by just saying that this ordinance, it's not an ordinance, beg to differ, this instruction is essentially to vote, tell the staff to come up with the proposals as mentioned. The, Mr. Henderson.
Just, just one more quick comment. I just want to make it clear that at least, you know, we're talking about keeping it confined to part of, part of District 2, and actually even a smaller area than the original, the original overlay, which I would prefer that it be more or less somewhere within these boundaries, because we know what killed the last one was how big it was, and it was just extremely too big, that's what killed the thing. And to go back retroactive on so many things was what killed it. So, we got to get rid of the, the stuff that killed it. We gotta get, we gotta cut the cancer out, and keep, keep the good stuff in there, if we will, please. And also, with the incorporation issue, even if you had borders around, within a, say, a given area of three-point there in Lake Wiley, that would be your kind of, your town center, there's still a tremendous, a tremendous amount of area surrounding there that still needs to be with, with some stricter guidelines to where we do not keep destroying and devaluing our properties out there. I just, I just want to reiterate those facts.
Let me wrap this up by just saying that it's kind of correct, we were just revisiting what we talked about before. The realities of Lake Wiley were two things, like Fort Mill traffic. If you have growth, you're gonna have traffic, it just goes with a thriving community. But we want to have smart growth, I get it, but I just want to do it in a smart way, that's my uniqueness. But the next part of it was to protect the quality of the water. So, at that time, we talked about the watershed district, and how that could be expanded, and if I'm in error in anything I say, Audra, please feel free to correct me. And we agreed that we would look at that to provide the protection of the water. So, with that being said, that problem seems to have been addressed, but we're still dealing with the traffic in general, which kind of ties into the Fort Mill scenario, which, you know, is one example to allow 35 homes to be built over a year, or whatever this is saying. I'm just not into government takeover of business. I'm just not into that at all. I certainly believe we need to provide guidance, but I just don't want total takeover. So, being the conservative I am, there is no way I can support this, just like the other one that was up. So, that being said, and understand this is to provide the staff instructions with this acceptance of this motion to move forward on an ordinance plan. That being said, question on the motion, all those in favor?
That was a point of clarification. I'm still not sure what we're voting on. To me, it was a discussion item.
This was a discussion to give direction.
To give direction to staff.
So, it's a discussion item.
Yeah. By my count, and by my notes, I have two for reviving the overlay, one against moving forward on Councilman Henderson's request, Councilman Henderson's request, Councilman Johnson saying, let's debate an ordinance, and Councilwoman Cox stating...
Here's, I'll state mine again. If we're looking at a freeze for Fort Mill, then we ought, sure ought to look at something short of that for Fort Mill, as well as the Carolina Water Service District. That's my point. If we commission a study group, they need to look at things that, that are less than a freeze, which is strange, because we approved it in the first ordinance, but we're not doing it here. And I think the key point is to give the message to staff, at least as far as I'm concerned, that we ought to give District 2 the same consideration that we're giving to District 1, as well as 5 and 7, who are concerned about Fort Mill, and include that in the discussion as we move forward, and look at options short of a freeze that accomplish the goals that we, that we're all on the same page we want to accomplish.
Well, and that's true, we don't need to segment it out, that was the point I was making, by, by setting Lake Wiley out with the water part mentioned, too, which we've already, I thought, addressed, and that's being worked on, correct?
We had mentioned and promised that we would work on a Lake Wiley watershed overlay. I've not made any progress on it, but it is still on my agenda to do.
But we did provide the instructions to move forward with that for the water protection. And then, correct, to Ms. Cox's scenario, the traffic demands, well, it's kind of in the same ballpark as the Fort Mill situation. And Mr. Johnson.
I'm not sure, I want to make my, what my thoughts on this are. I'm willing to study the old plan, the original overlay, I'm willing to consider new options. I certainly think this is something, when we talk about four or five issues that could be addressed by this study committee, this would seem to me to be a fantastic thing to throw into that study committee. I'm, I don't, you had, you had mentioned saying that I was a for. I'm not a for or against till I see some of the impact that this could have, and what it's actually gonna do. So, I, I don't have a problem with us looking at something, but I, I'm not gonna commit one way or the other to it, once it's done, I just don't know.
And the problem here, again, is this is so general, and nobody knows what they're voting on. I get it, because it's just asking for guidance from the staff.
May I make a recommendation?
Yes, please do.
Couple recommendations, and maybe this'll help council and me. We are gonna be discussing the comp plan at a workshop on April 26th, it's one week away. That comp plan should result in ordinances that implement it. Based on what I'm reading from Councilman Henderson, my concern is, this comp plan and the ordinance that I tried to draft would be in conflict. I would prefer that we do the workshop, at that workshop, there'll be a lot of discussion, that way, if there's gonna be changes, you want to look at limiting density in an area that presently isn't there, that will provide the direction, and then I can proceed with some form of ordinance. In the, at the same time, going forward with a committee, I agree with Councilwoman Cox, that this could all be rolled in together, and look at the Lake Wiley, and make the suggestions that are applicable to both Fort Mill and Lake Wiley.
So, my concern as chairman is that, as stated for discussion and direction, I guess this is not so specific to nail you down to one area, it becomes interpretation.
Mr. Chairman.
So, help me out here. County attorney?
If she'd have said that in the first place, I think we could've saved a lot of time.
Yeah, there you go.
Basically, that's what, that's what the discussion and direction is saying, let's wait till after the comprehensive plan discussion to decide which one of the two we need to go. I think that's an excellent idea.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
You know, every time I've gotten my hopes up, my constituents, who are unincorporated, who are people, they're individuals, they're, they are, they pay quite a few taxes into this county. Now, if I continue having issues where this thing is just pushed to the back burner, again, and again, and again, we are borderlining taxation without representation. And it cannot, it must not, and it will not continue. And I believe I have my people's support on this from not, this will not continue, it will not stand any longer.
Michael, let me get clarification from you, based on all the particulars for discussion that was mentioned in this, with all the different comments made, can this, this motion pass and still allow for Audra's suggestion?
It was simply discussion with various directions and considerations to have in a prospective ordinance, which can go forward, notwithstanding a comprehensive plan discussion. But what Ms. Miller's comment was simply that there's an upcoming forum, where these subjects will be in complete debate and discussion, and it'll be, it'll be an opportunity to give even further direction and clarification on how, if at all, you want the ordinance that Mr. Henderson is proposing to either drape over the comprehensive plan, complement the comprehensive plan, what, what direction can be gained, once those, those proposals are discussed with council.
So, support of the motion allows for that process?
Yes, I think council's given direction based on the agenda item.
Mr. Roddy.
Just, I thought what Audra said kind of covered what Bruce was looking to do, so I think she's saying they're gonna discuss the comp plan, and it can address what he's wanting to address through the comp plan, not sending out a specific ordinance to address it. If I understood correctly, she basically gave you an out that's gonna address this, without having to try to go through and get votes to do it. The comp plan is gonna cover these areas over in that, in that community, or that corridor, or whatever the specified area is. And, and I didn't think, I mean, looking at, we just did four, it said, consider first reading on which was the new four, and the new five said, council to discuss, so this wasn't even, was this even an action item?
Yeah.
This was discussion. So, I think she gave, she gave the perfect scenario to cover this discussion, and like Chad said, probably could've saved some time had she mentioned it earlier, because it's gonna cover, the comprehensive plan is gonna cover this topic, once they meet in a week.
Is it actually gonna happen this time?
Hang on, Mr. Henderson. Mr. Shanahan.
Just, just a reminder, in reference to the comp plan, again, and we've been talking about it, but that comp plan was built using citizen input. We went all over the county, and so, what you're gonna be getting, or seeing, is stuff that's gone through our citizens, and they've said, yes, we like this.
So, we had a motion and a second, so we move on to motion?
The motion was, the second was to discuss.
We've done it, so.
So, we've discussed.
Number six.
We're done.
Yes.
Okay, so we're pretty much done. Okay. Counsel, consider request from Sheriff for Rigorization of Detention Center Command Staff.
Move to approve.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Next item, consider approval of a resolution to designate Sturgis Road as a no-through-truck route from the intersection of Springdale Road to the intersection of Waterford Road to prevent heavy truck traffic on a residential street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no, next item. Hang on just a second, we'll let the... Okay. Counsel, consider the approval of and authorize the county manager and chairman to sign Amendment Number Two for Armstrong-Glynn gravel road contract for Penny's Three program to design Frontier Road in the amount of $55,350.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I want to make sure this is Pioneer right off of Highway 55, is that correct? Pioneer Road?
Pioneer Road's right off of 49, 49 Gold Hill Road. Frontier Road.
Any further?
Oh, okay, my mistake.
Any further discussion? Ms. Cox.
I said this in our Penny's committee meeting, and I don't know, the information that we're providing in this, and one of the things we want to change is to be able to identify when the program, even though we are not going to get to a point of overbudgeting, or exceeding the budget, at this stage with the design phase, in all likelihood, we are going to exceed the budget for this work at the end of the program, because we did not factor in 17% right-of-way that needs to be done. I just want to make sure that I'm clear, when I vote no for this, it's because I think we need to get an answer to, what is our total overbudgeting gonna be for Penny's Three? And I need, I think we need to have that information, or at least a very good guesstimate on that before, before we move this along. Otherwise, projects will continue to move forward and get completed, and the ones at the end will not get done. So, I just think we need an answer to that, so that's the reason that I'm gonna be voting no for these, but I understand the reasons why council may move forward.
Any clarification, Bill, that you want to make on that point? Any further discussion? Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Counsel, consider approval of allocating additional funding in the amount of $71,212.70 from the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund for the completion of the waterline stabilization project at the intersection of Highway 160 and Gold Hill Road.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Next item, counsel to consider approval of Campco Engineers Design Contract Amendment Number One, in a not-to-exceed amount of $177,515 for the right-of-way procurement of Project 11149001, South Carolina 160 Gold Hill Road to State Line.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye. Oppose no. Counsel, consider approval of Campco Engineering Agreement in a not-to-exceed amount of $154,577.51 for designing Penny's Three Project 111498K, University Drive, Eden Terrace to Bird Street.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, counsel to consider approving the amendment of the Fee in Lue of Advalorem Taxes Agreement between York County and Coroplast.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, consider adopting a resolution identifying a project to satisfy the requirements of South Carolina Code, annotated Section 124440, so as to allow investment expenditures incurred by a company known to the county as Project Sunnyside, including its affiliated and related entities, to qualify as expenditures eligible for a fee in lieu of taxes arrangement with York County, and to commit to enter into necessary agreements with the company, and to effectuate the intent of this resolution and other related matters.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, counsel to consider first reading of an ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of a fee in lieu of advalorem taxes, an incentive agreement to provide for a fee in lieu of advalorem taxes... to provide for a fee in lieu of ad valorem taxes incentive and infrastructure credits to a company known to the county as Project Sunnyside, the inclusion of certain property in York County, and a multi-county industrial park, and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, counsel to consider adopting a resolution identifying a project to satisfy the requirements of Title 12, Chapter 44 of the South Carolina Code so as to allow investment expenditures incurred by a company known to the county as Project Glass, its affiliates and related entities, to qualify as expenditures eligible for a fee in lieu of taxes arrangement with York County, providing for other economic development incentives in connection with the company's project, including special source revenue credits, providing for any other necessary agreements with the company to affect the intent of this resolution and other matters related thereto.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Do we have a motion on consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Next item, committee reports. Penny's for Progress Committee Chairwoman Kristi Cox.
The committee met today at 4:00, and we discussed all of the items we've previously discussed. This is, and county manager addressed this earlier, so I don't want to repeat all that, but we have, we intend to have another meeting in the next two weeks and follow up with the auditor with questions, and hopefully come back with recommendations to the council then, within the next month.
Thank you, ma'am. Finance and Operations Committee Chairman Michael Johnson.
Finance and Operations met today at 5:00, considered applications for numerous boards and commissions. On the York County Natural Gas Board, we had four applications. The committee agreed to ask William Hagner, Joel Wood, and Steve Moore to appear before us on May the 2nd so that we can talk to them and then make a decision. On the Rock Hill, York County CVB, we approved Danny Holmes for an at-large position. On the Oakdale Fire Tax District Board, we approved Leon Yard. For the Hostility Tax Advisory Committee, we approved Dwight Muffett and Mark Van Sickle. For the Zoning Board of Appeals, we deferred. For Keep York County Beautiful, we approved Melody Curse. For the Building Board of Appeals, we approved Steve Crump, Curtis Seek, and Jason Weitzel. And on the Board of Rural Fire Control, we deferred. We also had a discussion regarding rural fire boards in general, and our concern that the Board of Rural Fire Control has no authority to enforce any rules that it sets, and that we are asked, we asked, we asked the county manager to come up with a solution for that. One of his ideas was to potentially bring in a fire consultant to help the county figure out what it would take to go potentially to a countywide system and to give some teeth to these types of rules. We asked that a cost estimate be provided to the full council.
Can I have a point of order? I'm just curious, and I understand that it seems as if the F and O, is F and O tackling the issue of countywide fire service revisions? It seems like that ought to be under the Public Safety Committee. This is a wholesale change.
When I finish my sentence, it'll tell you the answer to that question. I asked that that be brought and actually placed in the budget because there is no money for a fire consultant. It would have to be passed by the entire council in a budget session, and we asked that it be placed, and those numbers given to the budget, for that to be considered. And we asked for a ordinance to be either, to be provided, giving teeth, that's what we called it, teeth to the rural fire control over their department so they could have greater say. Certainly, our committee has no issue with this being moved over to public safety, as it certainly is an issue that affects and should be addressed by that committee.
That, it should be moved to public safety. That's where it should be.
Who's the chairman of the public safety?
Me.
Ms. Cox.
I'm on it.
You're on it?
Yeah.
So, we need, we need to get that moved over to the right committee. Next item is council member new non-agenda comments. There being none.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
What does that say?
It says 910 days. Very few people in this room know what has happened for the past 910 days. Karen, I'm going to ask you to put up the picture. The past 910 days, if you live in Tiga K or anywhere along Gold Hill Road, you've driven past this house because that is what that house has looked like for 910 days. Not a year, not 365 days, not two years, 720, 730 days. 910 days we've sat and stared at this house. And I know there are lots of reasons why this house looks like this, but how many days will we wait before we do something? Will it be 1,000 days that people get to drive by this house? This is on Gold Hill Road. I am sitting, when I took this picture, in the turn lane on Gold Hill Road. I simply went into the middle of the road, five lanes. I just turned in the lane, rolled down my window, took a picture with my cellphone. I'm asking something be done so that I don't have to come back here with another sign that says 1,000 days or 1,200 days. There has to be a way to take down public nuisance houses, houses that look that bad. I'm asking that, we talk about, you want to, you want to, you want to have homes for sale? That house is directly across the street from Palmetto Plantation. Every day those people pull out of their neighborhood, that's what they see. Every day, the 12,000, 15,000 people who live in Tiga K drive down Gold Hill Road, that's what they see. I'm asking that staff, the administration find a way to make this happen, make something happen. And don't tell me now, just tell me, just tell me when it gets done. Somebody tell me how we're going to take this house down.
And I don't want to create a debate on this, but just a point. That is a big issue. I'm dealt with it in my district, but once it goes through the legal process, the only other avenue left is we create another line item on our budgets for demolition, and then you're really talking money. So, any other comments? There being none. Well, we need a motion for executive session.
All right. I move we go into executive session, discuss a personnel matter involving a DNA analyst and a DNA technical leader, as well as personnel matters involving department heads that have left or will be leaving, including the assessor, economic development director, emergency management director, engineering director, finance director, planning director, public safety community director, communications director, and purchasing director. Also discuss a prospective contractual matter involved in a franchise agreement, as well as receive legal advice and an economic development update.
I'll second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. We'll start back in 10 minutes. We have one action item out of executive session. Do we have a motion?
Yes, sir. I move that we authorize the sheriff's request to change the payroll for the DNA analyst and the DNA technical leader.
Do we have a sec, got a second? Discussion. Question on the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. If there's no further business, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved. Second.
Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.